Hi, good evening. We're going to call this meeting and leave Board of Education in order. Please rise for the flag allegiance.
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to move the meeting agenda? Ms. Wilson, second, Dr. Francis, Ms. O'Neil.
I'd like to make a motion to move the Wellness Agenda report to the discussion, the last item on the discussion.
Is there a second? Ms. Brayden, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Passes seven zero, Mr. Scher absent. So that will now be the last discussion item. Alright, so on the table we have a motion to accept the meeting agenda as amended. All those in favor? Passes seven zero, again, Mr. Scher absent. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business, and I'm guessing why most of you are here with us tonight, is the recognitions. So if you'll give us one second, Mr. Mayo, and I will head over there. I love this part. Alright, so this is the recognition portion of our meeting. See, over here, completely different from that over there. What we're going to do is ask you to remain until all of the recognitions are done. We'll take a brief pause. For those of you that like to stay and hang out and watch a Board of Education meeting, feel free, you can stay. Otherwise, there's cookies outside, thanks to the PTA. We appreciate that. Alright, so first up is the 2019 Connecticut All-State Music Festival Invites. Mr. Taylor, Ms. Tullott.
Mr. Petrowski's out of town, so Ms. Tullott is here to assist in the saluting our students who have made the All-State Music Festival this year. Each year, more than 1,000 vocalists and instrumentalists from every public and private high school in Connecticut audition each year for acceptance to one of four all-state performing groups: band, chorus, orchestra, and jazz band. I am pleased to report that this year, once again, Greenwich High School had more students selected for All-State than any other high school in the state. The students honored here this evening have spent many years working hard to become fine musicians, and although it is primarily their passion for music that has led them to this impressive achievement, their efforts have been continually supported by their parents and families, by our exceptionally strong music faculty, by our school administrators, and by our Board of Education, all of which place a high priority on the arts. So I'm pleased to present to you tonight Greenwich High School's representatives to the Connecticut All-State Music Festival, which took place in Hartford in April. As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated, and please remain up here until everyone has been called up. We have a lot of students that are involved at Beauty and the Beast tonight, which is opening night of the high schools, so there will be a lot of students who will get their certificates tomorrow. First, with the All-State Band, we had Iris Shee. And then, I was supposed to say, please hold your applause, that's my bad. I'm sorry. All-State Chorus, we've got Charlie Adorni, and Gabriella Bernstein, Marcos Aziaaga, Renato Granmont, Natalie Ito, Kaylee Jackson, Josie Mangold, Julia Marcusen, Grace Marinelli, Alex Orfanos, Brennan Skorel, Matthew Sullivan, and Derek Shong. We had two students in the All-State Jazz Band, Lucas Gazianis and Nathan King. And we had a student in the All-State Orchestra, Alison Sobieri. Congratulations to all.
Happy to have you. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you again, and again, and again, and again. The Greenwich High School math team completed the 1819 season with its fourth consecutive record-shattering performance. The Cards won their 10th straight Fairfield County title. No one's ever come close to doing that. And they won by the largest margin in history, and actually scored more than 40% more points than the second-place team. The scoring on the season is cumulative, but Greenwich hasn't lost a match outright since October 2014. At the state meet, Greenwich won by the biggest margin in the meet's history, making it 10 state champions in the last 11 years. Once again, a record-shattering performance, and they won by more points than half the team scored. So, congratulations to them. Here is your county and state championship math team: Derek Shong, Zachary Lang, Sam Florin, Kyle Shong, Jovita Lee, Iris Shee, Zachary Penenbaum, Phoebe Harsh, and Skylar McDonald. I would like to personally thank Derek and Jovita for being fantastic senior captains, and they will both be at MIT next year.
Because we're at Hamilton Avenue, we're going to stick with the STEM theme tonight. Next up is the Science Bowl Regional Champions. Ms. Bono.
Thank you, thank you, members of the board, Greenwich community. I would like to call up the students up first, so can we please have Derek Zahn, Phoebe Harsh, Rahul Subramaniam, and Nicholas Lu. Rahul cannot be here tonight, he too is at Beauty and the Beast, and Nick Lu is in Albuquerque, New Mexico, at a science fair. Do you want to open it? You could just open it. We could do it there. Thank you. So, each year Greenwich High School's science team competes at the U.S. Department of Energy's Regional Science Bowl at UConn stores. The competition is a fast-paced Jeopardy-type of quiz bowl, where students answer biology, chemistry, physics, mathematics, urban space, and energy questions. This is the second year Greenwich High School won the regional competition. With this win, the team was invited to compete at the U.S. Department of Energy's National Competition in Washington, D.C. We just returned in April. To date, Greenwich High School is the only team that has ever represented Fairfield County at the Nationals. Last year, they tied for 10th place. At the competition this year, this remarkable group of passionate, high-spirited scientists tied for 7th place out of 64 teams in the United States. What an incredible accomplishment. So proud. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We understand if you want to go, we'd love to have you stay, but there's cookies in the locker. What can you say?
We gotta get to Beauty and the Beast.
So the next item up is our consent agenda, is our motion to accept the consent agenda. Ms. O'Neil, is there a second? Miss Dayton, all those in the discussion, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Seven zero, thank you. Alright, next up is the school welcome. Mr. Grasso, come on down.
Wait, wait till you hear what I have to say, then you can just... Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, members of the board, Mr. Mayo, and guests. Welcome to the Hamilton Avenue STEM Magnet School. I'm John Grasso, and for the last two years, it's been my absolute pleasure to be the interim principal of this fine school. In the spirit of the evening, and to kind of give you an idea of where this all begins, I'd like to introduce our STEM coach and mentor for the Hamilton Avenue 2019 Odyssey of the Mind Team. She has fantastic news that she'd like to share as we celebrate the creativity and commitment of our students. So would you please welcome Kathy Byrne.
Four years ago, I began my journey as the STEM coach at Hamilton Avenue School. Three years ago, I launched our first Odyssey of the Mind Team. I'm sorry, getting... Odyssey of the Mind is an international organization which teaches problem-solving skills to kids. The kids work on long-term problems, where they are given six months to solve a problem that has many different parts to it, and they also have to learn how to solve spontaneous problems. They walk into a room with a judge, they're given a problem, and three minutes to come up with a solution to it. Three years ago, I launched our team, and we worked really, really hard. This year, my team placed second in the state, and have been invited to go to Nationals. Actually, I need to correct myself. We are going to world competition. So we will be competing against China, and 25 countries around the world will be competing. I just wanted to give you a quick little idea of what these great kids have been working on. So I want you guys to come stand up, and they're going to show you some of the things they've created. So, we had a choice of five different problems to solve. The problem they chose was called Leonardo's Workshop. As part of this, they had certain requirements and things they needed to do. They needed to recreate one of Leonardo's inventions, so you can see that they recreated his parachute. They also needed to recreate one of his paintings, and they had to do it using non-traditional artistic materials. They couldn't paint it or draw it, so they chose to do it out of rice and seashells and torn paper. They then had to create another one of Leonardo's creations, and so they recreated several of his sketches. All of these needed to be incorporated into an eight-minute performance. And during that performance, they had to show Leonardo's Workshop, they had to have Leonardo in his workshop. They came up with a creative idea to show what Leonardo was like, and that he was an artist, so they created a hat that is a paint palette, and a beard that is made out of paintbrushes. So that was part of Leonardo's costume. So in our play, we have two students who are visiting a museum, they stumble upon a time travel tube, and travel back to Leonardo's Workshop, where they are amazed by all of the different things that they're seeing there. Meanwhile, we have two patrons who visit Leonardo who have a severe problem. They've dropped gold coins into the water, and they need Leonardo to help them come up with a solution. So Leonardo works very hard on trying to create a scuba mask, but it just doesn't work out. But it does inspire the modern-time scuba mask, and so you can see the different things the kids have created, and they put all this together into a performance. And, as I said, we placed second in the state. They did an absolutely amazing job. Next Wednesday, we are traveling to Michigan State University, where they will be competing against 25 different countries and students from 50 states. So we're very, very excited, and we're very, very proud of all the work. All of this is, the creativity, the problem-solving, it's all done entirely by the kids. As a coach, I can teach them skills, I can provide materials, but all of the ideas have to come from these six kids. And all of the creation of all of the things that they did, all of this, they did themselves. So I'm very, very proud of them, and I'm very proud to be their president.
And Kathy, we're extremely proud of you, and many of you donated to their GoFundMe page. They raised over $7,000 for this trip, which is a very expensive trip, but thank you all very much. Thank you, members of the board, thank you, audience. Have a good evening.
That's all I'm saying. Well, thank you, Mr. Grasso. Hey, guys. So both of my sons did Odyssey. I love Odyssey, but we all have to give a thank you to Mrs. O'Neil, because when she was an administrator here, she brought Odyssey of the Mind to Greenwich, so you guys should say a good thank you. Alright, with that, we're going to start our public hearing. I saw our student Bobby Ewan Flower Sherban is here. Oh, he is, there he is. Alright, you checked out already. Alright, so this is the beginning of our public hearing. First up, Hawaii.
Good evening. A quick explanation as to the current situation of myself and our other speaker, Alex Kazakov. This week has been very interesting as far as our Student Government Executive Committee. Alex is actually currently in Arizona at the Intel Science Fair with some other students from GHS, which is extremely prestigious, so he was unable to make the flight back here and then back to Arizona, so he decided he'd stay there. I'm coming directly from a track meet at the high school. Myself and our Vice President of Student Concerns, V. Edmonds, are both on the track team, and this was our last qualifier meet. I was able to PR by three feet in shot put and make states, so that was really cool. That's why the track apparel and the Hawaiian. And going down the list of all of the other people who would be here, our Vice President of Special Events is currently at the high school performing in Beauty and the Beast, which is tonight, tomorrow, and then Saturday at 7:00 p.m. So we were very shorthanded as far as being able to speak. Like I said, I came directly here without being able to change. But, that said, I was able to make it because the senior class, the students at GHS, the parents, the faculty, the amount of support that we've seen, and gratuity and thankfulness for the work that you guys have put in with graduation has been extremely profound at the high school community, and I wouldn't miss the opportunity to say thank you to all of you in person for all the hard work that you put in. Besides that, this week, we were able to have, two weekends ago, the Food Truck Fair, which was an activity that we're trying to make annual. We've run into some issues as far as water falling from the sky. It's happened once now, but we were able to have a food truck fair where we raised money for Kids in Crisis, a local organization, and this was extremely beneficial to both the organization and the GHS student community. We had everything from local food trucks to students who have bands, and they were able to come and perform. It was a great community service event, and we're very proud of it, and that was GHS Student Government for the month. I, again, apologize for our shorthandedness, but thank you again.
We look forward to seeing you at our meeting next time. Even though you've mentally checked out already.
Interesting, first Monday.
Alright, I don't see Carol Sutton in the room for GEA, so we'll move on to PTA. Carol, that's her, we'll come back to her.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayo, Chairman Bernstein, Principal Grasso, members of the board cabinet and community. I'm Karen Hirsch, President of PTA Council, and with me is Cricket Diamond, First VP. We want to begin by congratulating all the students who were recognized tonight for their accomplishments in both arts and academics. One of PTA Council's missions is to support the health and welfare of our students at home, in schools, and the community at large, and at the same time, we want our students to have access to the best academic opportunities available. If we believe that our students' academic achievements should be judged by more than just a test score, then it would be safe to say that those who are teaching them should also be judged by more than just one data point. Likewise, if we feel that feedback's an essential part of effective learning that gives students clear guidance on how to enhance their learning, then shouldn't the same be said for our educators? If Greenwich's definition of quality teaching is based on the multiple measures used in the Tupper Rubrik, and its goal is to maintain a culture of continuous learning and improvement, then yearly stakeholder feedback should be an integral part of the process. Consistent stakeholder feedback can help to highlight teachers who stand out as educational leaders and show why they shine. It can also help uncover areas of weakness that need support. Students often have the most comprehensive view of how their teachers educate and motivate them on a daily basis. It would send a strong signal to our students that we care about their point of view, and as a district has already created a culture of feedback in the classroom, is an opportunity to model what productive evaluations can provide. If our ultimate goal is to improve academic outcomes for our students, then they, along with their parents, should have the opportunity to provide anonymous feedback every year. Research has proven that no school-level factor matters more to student success than engaged, high-quality teachers, and it's clear that professional learning opportunities have contributed to the success of our educational programs. As the budget policy is being discussed tonight, we remind you the newly-approved budget does not include any funding for professional learning. If we want to see academic success continued, then it's imperative that we include funding for these types of opportunities going forward. PTA consistently advocates for the education of the whole child, and we note that budget policy, operations report, field and grounds MOU, and wellness center proposal are all focused on areas that impact the whole child: facilities, safety and security, food services, and social emotional well-being. Our students deserve safe and modernized learning environments that optimize the ways in which they learn, and there still is a great need for well-maintained, regulation-sized fields, as our school facilities and fields are used not just by our students, but by numerous other town groups and residents. We thank the administration for working to ensure that the graduation ceremony for Greenwich High School's Class of 2019 will take place at Cardinal Stadium as planned, and for guaranteeing there will be spectator seating for fall sports. We look forward to seeing designs for new stadium bleachers and learning if it is feasible to use the space below as a storage area, or to house a concession stand or the much-needed restrooms and teen rooms. Schools should be safe and nurturing environments that support the academic, physical, and mental health of our children, which is why council, and parents alike, also place a high priority in food served in the schools, as we recognize its power to fuel learning. While we find it disheartening that there's been a relaxation of the nutritional standards for school meals nationwide, healthy meals do support DPS's core mission of education. A vast body of research shows that improved nutrition in schools leads to increased focus and attention, improved test scores, and better classroom behavior. Remember, schools do not just serve lunch, they serve children. Providing healthy meals is only half the battle, they also need to be appealing to students, otherwise we end up simply creating more cafeteria waste. And as such, we look forward to hearing your discussion on the different pilot options presented by the school lunch committee. No matter what direction that you choose to go in, it's important we not overlook our dedicated cafeteria staff. With each smile or kind word, they make a difference in our children's day. Their hard work and willingness to make improvements should not go unrecognized.
Council also thanks the board for their motion to remove styrofoam trays by the start of summer school. The bill banning styrofoam trays in schools recently passed the state senate and is moving closer to becoming law. Now is the time to be leaders in the state, to begin using properly-vetted alternatives, and to determine if all of our school kitchens can support the use of dishwashers and reusable stainless-steel trays ahead of the 2021 deadline. Stress, emotional, academic, and the behavioral needs of our student population has also been a topic of concern for council and parents for some time, and we are glad to see that work has begun to open the Education and Wellness Center at GHS by next June. Providing support and offering interventions for students who are currently experiencing social, emotional, and academic difficulties will make a big impact and help all of our students to become successful learners. We thank our partner in education, the Greenwich Alliance, for providing a grant to help this make this a reality. When we all work together to give our students what they need to succeed in the classroom and beyond, we can achieve great things. So in closing, we again want to thank the board and administration for continuing to work with us and providing opportunities for stakeholder feedback, and for their time and dedication to the students, teachers, and the community at large. Thank you.
Getting some sign-up sheets. On Julie will be Amy.
I'm Julie Deschamps from PTA Council, Green Schools. First, I'd like to thank the board for taking a step forward by resolving to eliminate styrofoam trays in the school cafeterias by the summer, and to research alternatives while reusable stainless-steel trays are trialed at New Lebanon School, the only school with a dishwasher. While this was the right decision for our students' health, the resolution did not pursue funding for the only responsible choice for student health, the environment, and the budget: a reusable wear system. Unfortunately, it was felt that a request for an interim appropriation would not be well-received by the BET and RTM at this time, and the timing of upcoming meetings would not make approval possible. The continued use of single-use disposable foodware is not sustainable in the long run for the environment and for our budget. In addition, this practice is counter to classroom lessons about sustainability and health, and the messaging is inconsistent. This is an educational issue. The students are well-aware, as evidenced by their comments at the last meetings, that our schools are not practicing what they preach. In the board docs, you'll find a summary of alternatives already thoroughly researched and tested by Green Schools and Food Services. Many of the products explored have been ruled out due to the concerns for student health, and others are impractical and expensive. For example, paper boats have limited use and functionality because of their size and absorbency. Younger students cannot handle them, and they generate considerable waste. While it's safer for student health, polylactic acid, or PLA, trays, which are new to the market, have an annual expense of $78,000, about five times the cost of styrofoam. Reusable options like baskets or trays would have to be washed by hand, a tedious and potentially expensive process. It is irresponsible and illogical to spend more dollars on single-use disposable. It is money literally thrown in the trash. Over time, reusable trays are safer, economical, and better for the environment. They do not pose the health concerns of... They do not pose the health concerns of many single-use options. They do not generate waste, and they do not require continuous purchasing and the considerable hauling and disposal costs associated with a disposable. The trial of reusable stainless steel trays at New Lebanon School started on Monday. Already, it has resulted in an impressive reduction of waste. Before the pilot, about five to six bags of trash were produced, primarily from the styrofoam trays. Custodians had to change off the bags every half hour after every shift. The past four, over the past four days, only one bag of trash has been generated each day, an 80% reduction by volume. With additional waste reduction measures, including collection of liquids and recycling, there has been a 54% reduction in weight. This is an annual difference of about 1,086 trash bags with disposables versus 181 with reusables, or over five years, 5,430 bags versus 905 bags at just one elementary school. Imagine if all the schools district-wide achieved such results. There could be significant cost savings for purchasing, hauling, and disposal, and the deleterious environmental impacts would be mitigated. This could be a reality, but only with your support. Green Schools, along with parents, students, community leaders, will continue to advocate for a reusable foodware system, as we have done for the past decade. We urge you to support this decision, and make a change for the good of our environment, our children's education, and our budget. And better food service ware should be paired with nutritious, appealing food, and I urge the Board to pilot alternatives to our current food offerings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up are Amy Barrett and then Charlotte Halasy. I know you guys are together. Carol, we'll get back to you after the public comments. We're gonna give you three minutes, Mike, Carol.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Halasy.
And I'm Amy Barrett. We run the Girls Empowerment Club at Greenwich High School and are working with PERIOD, the largest youth-run NGO in women's health, to spearhead the passage of legislation at the local, state, and national level. Our mission is to de-stigmatize menstruation and to end period poverty throughout the Greenwich Schools District by having feminine hygiene products provided free of charge and easily accessible in Greenwich Public Schools.
A week ago, we launched our petition alongside PERIOD that states our direct legislative goals: to provide PERIOD products in all bathrooms used in public schools that educate girls in sixth through 12th grade. We already have more than 800 signatures from students and parents in support of this proposal throughout our district. We are very excited by the support we have received, and it is clear to us that this is a critical opportunity for Greenwich to lead the way in addressing this important issue within education.
In the 21st century America, schools have an obligation to serve all students equitably. Every student deserves the reassurance that their school restaurants are outfitted within necessities to accommodate their biological needs. Yet, for roughly half of the US student population, there's a glaring exception to this commitment: menstrual hygiene products. Providing free, readily-available menstrual products in school is critical to helping all students succeed.
Menstrual hygiene products are basic necessities and an important part of students' health and ability to participate in society with dignity. Free toilet paper and soap are provided in every school bathroom as basic necessities for natural bodily functions. Yet, for students who need PERIOD products, more than half the student population, similar resources aren't provided.
Easy access to PERIOD products is necessary for equal opportunity in education. As part of our proposal, our goal is to have menstrual hygiene products provided free of charge at Greenwich Public Schools, and to recognize as a basic necessity a biological right rather than a privilege in all bathrooms used in public schools that educate sixth to 12th graders. To this end, we are working with Ampflow, a manufacturer of feminine hygiene products. Ampflow is committed to providing discounted menstrual hygiene products to schools to help combat period poverty, and is working with other schools around the country. This company estimates that providing both dispensers and enough products for all Greenwich Public High Schools and Middle School bathrooms would cost approximately $5,000 in the first year, and in subsequent years would cost approximately $3,000 per year.
We believe that the Greenwich Board of Education is in a unique position to play a valuable leadership role in the community and in our country by recognizing that a critical aspect of education is the recognition of menstruation as a basic biological process and providing necessary feminine hygiene products at no cost, as a fundamental right. Together, we can help end period poverty, achieve menstrual equity, and support our students and staff with the basic necessities that is their fundamental right. We are very excited to be a part of driving this important change, to assure that within our public schools, every student is treated with equity, dignity, and respect. To this date, a legislation has passed, been passed in New York, California, Illinois, and Texas. Every child has the right to learn in a safe environment where they are treated with dignity and respect. Please help us show our state and our nation that Greenwich and Connecticut recognize this important truth: gender-based rights are human rights. Thank you so much for permitting us to address you all this evening.
All right. The next speaker is John Powers, followed by Stephanie Chalva.
Hello, my name is John Powers. I'm an eighth grader at Central Middle School. At the end of the year before graduating, every eighth grader must do a capstone. Capstone is a project addressing a problem in our community and a solution to fix it. The problem I chose was the conditions of the fields, and that's what I'm here to talk about today. After reading countless articles, there's no real initiative to change the fields. One of the suggested solutions was to turf the fields. Turf seemed like a good idea, seeing that it won't flood when it rains. This idea was shot down by an anti-turf group who got more than 2,200 signatures trying to ban turf. I then emailed the turf manager for the Department of Parks and Rec, Tim Coughlin. Mr. Coughlin said that along with properly-constructed grass fields, that turf could become a real option. Mr. Coughlin also stated that artificial turf is very effective, especially because of the high demand put on them from all sports that are being played today, including soccer, lacrosse, football, flag football, rugby, field hockey, cricket, PE classes, recess, and other school events. Also, early in the spring when natural grass fields are not ready yet for the baseball, er, no. Also, early in the spring when natural grass fields are not ready yet, the baseball and softball team can start their practices on time. We also don't, yeah, we also don't apply any chemicals to artificial fields. Turf seemed like a viable option, but not when there's a formal petition against it. Another one of the huge problems was the fact that there's no proper drainage. I emailed Mr. Bernstein, the chairman of the BOE, who is here today, and he also stated that one of the big problems at schools, especially like Central, is the fact that they have no proper drainage. It could rain out on Monday, and the field would still be soaking wet until the next week. I'm currently bringing this topic to light right now because, partly because of my obligation to, but it's also because it's a serious problem in our community. Anytime it so much has, anytime it so much has drizzles, the fields aren't usable for days on end. I'm currently on Central's baseball team, and whenever it rains, we can't use the fields because there's a pond near third base. Hopefully, there is a solution to this problem that won't be petitioned, will actually work. Thank you.
All right. So next up is Stephanie Chalva, followed by Melissa Feronda.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Chalva. I'm a mother of three, and I work as a physician assistant in internal medicine. I must say that one of the hardest things about my job is getting my patients to take their medications for their chronic illnesses. These meds are primarily for high blood pressure, diabetes, cholesterol, and underlying lung disease. The number-one reason I hear is, they don't want to have to take something on a daily basis, and why can't they work on diet and exercise? My reply is always the same: incorporating lifestyle changes is a necessary step. You are what you eat. If you choose to eat these ultra-processed foods that are quick and easy, full of carbs, fat, oils, you are choosing to make your illnesses worse. And as humans, we all need the right types of foods to sustain our bodies, to be able to function and think by breaking down the food into essential vitamins and nutrients. We all need adequate sleep, hydration, and we need to incorporate physical activity to ensure that our bodies work efficiently and to the highest degree. We get to choose what we put into our bodies. Our children do not get to choose what they put into their bodies. Their parents do, and the school cafeteria does. So why is the latter choosing to put highly-processed foods that are full of those fats, sugar, sodium, cholesterol, and other harmful additives into the children's lunch food? Why is it so hard to eliminate these items and replace it with healthier fruits and vegetables and meats that are of the highest grade possible? I don't understand why this issue, parents keep bringing up over and over to the Board and the Food Services, has not been changed yet. Unlike my patients, who do have a choice to change their lifestyle, or else be put on long-term medication, our children don't yet have that choice. They depend on their teachers, their parents, and their schools to provide the best education and the best food possible. I pray that in 10 to 20 years, that these children don't become my patients, who I'm having the same conversation of, "You are what you eat. Changing your lifestyle and eating healthy and exercising is imperative to your health. Please help me to change that. Please vote on better food options, whether that be to vote a pilot such as the No Fuss Lunch, or the consulting group like Brigade." Change is inevitable, so why not change now for the better? Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Feronda. Sorry, that's the last speaker we have signed up. If there's anybody else that wishes to address the Board, I'd ask you to line up on the side over there. It's pretty careful, we'll call you last. Speakers get three minutes. Sorry, I should have repeated that at the beginning. We'll get three seconds more.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Feronda. I'm one of the monitors for the Hamilton Avenue School. I have your children myself as well. I have two in high school in Churby here at the Hamilton Avenue. I'm not prepared like the older persons in here with a speech. I just have a couple of questions for some of the parents that are not here today. They would like to have some answers as soon as possible. Of course, I agree with the healthy options of food, but I believe the education, how we feed our kids, is start at home. A lot of the food that you guys are talking that is not good, they do have the option to get four, three, four, any kind of fruit that they have, the same as the vegetables. A lot of the kids, they say, "Oh, I don't eat that at home. I don't want it. I don't like fruit. They don't give me fruit." So let's go start from there. We have to start with a good education about food at home. It's not only the cafeteria's workers, it's not only the school's responsibility. You know, besides the phones and things like that, I could agree a little bit, but we're talking about, what about the parents that they have free and reduced lunch? We have a lot of kids, especially in this school, I'm talking about for my school, which is Hamilton Avenue School, a lot of the kids pay 40 cents, and they do have dilemma with that some days. They do come sometimes without the 40 cents to pay for their lunch. What about the increment on the prices when we bring another company? Because I'm talking about, if a regular lunch is $3.60, what would be the price next if we bring new companies, if we bring the, all the new equipment that the cafeteria needs? Who's gonna be responsible for that? We're talking about from $3.60 going probably $7, $8? I'm pretty sure, I'm talking about, again, the Hamilton Avenue students' kids. They're not gonna have the money. A lot of them, they come for breakfast programs as well, or they even have breakfast, or they even have lunch. If they have to pay $15 a day just to get that food, why are we gonna respond to those parents? Again, why would decide the pilot program right here? This is one of the schools that has more kids. We serve around 250 lunches daily. Of course, glamming could be a great, but the parents can't afford. They can't afford going to Trader Joe's, they can't afford going to Cinderella to get a salad. Not in here. So we gotta be realistic. The program itself, it sounds excellent. The concern about the parents at this point is, what about the price? Who's paying for all of them? Who's paying for the new equipment? What about the cafeteria ladies? I don't know if you know how the process goes, but at least in here, we only have two ladies that work from morning to afternoon, cleaning, serving, and trying to do everything they can with their kids. We only two monitors in here, and sometimes we're like, we need extra more. What is the board answer? Sorry, there's no budget. So my question again is, where is that budget for all the new things that are coming from? From our pockets, from our taxes? What about the people that live in here that they cannot afford? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the Board when they come in? Not with Adam. With that, Carol, you're up. Barbara's gonna time you. She's gonna give you three minutes.
Erin forgot to send me the memo. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So, good evening, Principal Grasso, Chairman Bernstein, Board members, Superintendent Mayo, Cabinet, the ones that are here, and members of the community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. I know there were some honorees tonight, musicians, scientists, mathematicians. Greenwich certainly knows how to help kids follow their passions. I also ran into James in the hall, in the parking lot, and GEA did present, he and Alex, with a small token of our appreciation for all the wonderful times they've spent speaking with you this evening and keeping us up to breast. He probably likes that I didn't talk in front of him, because I told him, I said, "I said, 'Oh, okay.'" I said, "Very soon, you'll be too cool for schools." So, anyway, it has to do with school supplies and things like that, what we gave them. So, this evening, so on to what I meant to say. This evening, you'll be discussing the latest iterations of TUPL I and TUPL II. For those of you who can't keep up with the acronyms, the TE stands for Teacher Evaluation, the PL stands for Professional Learning, and so together, they go hand in hand. By state statute, Teacher Evaluation must be created and overseen by a committee that's made up of teachers and administrators. It is because of that true collaboration that I really enjoy going to that committee meeting. It's one of the ones that I really like. GEA is glad to be part of it, and I and one of my fellow teachers look forward to participating in the discussion tonight, should you have any questions you would like to ask people from the committee. So, moving on to Monday's budget meeting, it was pretty long, but it must have been gratifying for you to see the budget pass, and including the motion against part of the funding for Cardinal Stadium that that failed to carry. We are grateful for all the work you did on behalf of teaching and learning. We know it's a Herculean task that you have to take on, and you deserve to be proud of your record. And now you can start all over. So, on the other hand, on Monday, it was disappointing, at one point, to hear the debate on M and C, sort of salary increase caps. One of the speakers declared that voting yes on the proposed cap, or a decrease of a cap, would send a message to the other 11 bargaining units, that even management is not immune to belt tightening. They were discussing $38,000 out of a $440 million budget. So, I'm not sure what the message was, but it was a little bit perplexing and disturbing to be sitting there, listening to that type of debate go on, particularly when the teacher's contract is up for negotiation this summer. But, so we'll see you then, but that was a little disturbing. Unfortunately, there's another thing that's happening that's far more disturbing for you and for you, for everyone in the audience. So, we're gonna have a little civics lesson. The alarming message is coming from Hartford, in the form of a reconstituted proposal to shift a portion of the state's share of the teacher pension, that is the administration pension also, it's all certified staff, onto municipalities. And particularly, they're targeting municipalities whose salaries are above the state average. So, I'm gonna say that yes, Greenwich teachers earn above the state average. We also live in an area with above-average cost of living, and we're very fortunate to earn what we do. When it comes to the pension contribution, teachers don't pay Social Security. All they have, this is certified staff also, what they have for their future is the state teacher's pension. So, teachers and administrators have always paid their share. We don't exactly have a choice. You know, if we don't pay our share, it's a crime. But the state has had a choice, and for decades, it has chosen not to pay its full share. So, when that happens, you go into deficit. It's a very important word. So, in 2017, the legislature voted to shift 1% of its share, 1% of the state's share, onto the certified teachers. So now we pay 8%. In 2019, right now, it wants to shift another share of its obligation to the towns. What will be next? It's a slippery slope. If they can shift part of their obligation onto municipalities for the teachers, what else may they be doing in the future? The good news is that we still have time to defeat this bill, and we will defeat it if our state legislators here if our state legislators hear from us. If we don't defeat it, publishable teachers will pay for this three times. First, with the one percent extra that we're already paying into our pension. Second, with increased property taxes in the towns in which we live. And third, with belt tightening in the towns where we work. By the way, all of you and all of you will also pay with higher taxes and belt tightening for the schools. So this is gonna affect everyone, and we are asking you to please call or write your representatives as soon as you can. We only have three weeks, and someone told me once in the legislature that if they hear from five people on the same topic, they take notice. So we can do that in this audience. Okay? Finally, we read with great interest the proposal for an education and wellness center at Greenwich High School. The statistics in the report are sobering. You can read them yourself, I'm under time. But while GEA supports any and all efforts to address the increasingly complex needs of our high school students, we absolutely support that. We also believe that more must be done in the younger grades. Some of these issues that are in the reports, including extreme behaviors, aggressive behaviors, symptoms of anxiety, symptoms of depression, suicidal thoughts, these are manifesting themselves in our youngest learners all over town. It is not exclusive to one part of town or one area. How is it acceptable, then, to have one social worker for eleven elementary schools? And then there's another one that three schools share, but that's funded by a grant. How is this acceptable when more students each year are unavailable to learning for a myriad of reasons, including family dysfunction, trauma, and early symptoms of mental illness? The best pace to stop or slow a downward spiral is at its source when it first began. For Greenwich mother's schools, that's in the homes and schools of our youngest learners. And as you start to pursue the budget process again, I hope that you'll address this. And finally, GEA is pleased to see Opportunity Block back on the front burner. When the board directed it to be created a year ago, it was a step into the unknown under the direction of two people who are no longer here. Everyone has done the best they can, and I'm sure you are as eager as we are to see the results of the stakeholder surveys that are now being administered. We always work best when there's collaboration, and we look forward to working with you on that project and anything else that comes our way. Thank you. Have a great meeting.
All right, that ends our public hearing. We're gonna move on to the monthly reports, starting with the superintendent. Was there anybody else that signed up to speak to the board? No? No. All right, so the next up is... Okay, come on now. You get three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Mayo. My name is Nerlin Pearson, and I am co-chair of the Health and Wellness Committee and a member of the School Lunch Fund Committee and the Menu Planning Subcommittee. I'm speaking here on behalf of the Health and Wellness Committee. We, as a district, have a choice. Either we decide we want to make the hard choices and truly make substantive changes to the food we feed our students, or we don't. Either we make it a priority, or we don't. Our community is calling for change, and our students deserve better. If we choose to transform the current school food program by bringing better quality nutrient-dense food, we must disrupt the current system and build an entirely new framework, a framework built on new core values such as optimal nutrition, environmental sustainability, a valued workforce, animal welfare, and supporting local economies. Healthy nutritional practices have a great impact, not only on the acute and chronic health of children, but research has shown it also is a link to the academic achievement of students. We must aim to promote health and well-being in our students by increasing portions of fresh vegetables, fruits, whole grains, and legumes, while reducing portions of meat and dairy, reducing salt, white sugar, and high fructose corn syrup, and by eliminating highly-processed meats, artificial additives, and chemical preservatives from the food we serve. We must be innovative, learn from what others are doing and what others may bring to the table. Let's experiment, pilot, gain information, and then build and reconstruct from the knowledge gained and learned. After years of advocating for change, it is the first time in a very long time that we feel hopeful that change is on the horizon. We have a menu planning committee of administrators, parents, and nutrition experts, working together to transform the current school food program by adopting the core values I previously noted. We have a School Lunch Fund Committee that is thinking outside the box in its approach for improving the quality of food in our schools. What we now need are leaders willing to think bold and willing to place student health above budgetary constraints or a mindset that change will be too difficult or substantive change is not really necessary. We are asking you to be those leaders in our community and in our schools. If we allow ourselves to break from what we know and allow ourselves to dream of what we want, I have no doubt that those dreams will be attained. We now need leaders committed to take the necessary steps to effectuate the change and bring better quality nutrient-dense food to the students who want to eat in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna close the public hearing, and the next report will be the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Peter. First of all, it's great to be here in Chicago. Hey. My hometown, my hometown within a hometown, so I wish my... One wish I had is I wish my parents could see me up here right now as the superintendent of the school. That'd be really great. But on to my superintendent's report. On Monday, May thirteenth, the RTM passed the town's budget with no cuts to our operating or capital budget. As always, it's good to reflect on this process once it has come to conclusion, but also to celebrate a budget that meets the needs of our students and will help to bring our schools up to the standards that we all expect from our school district. So let's celebrate the new budget and thank the people that have sacrificed a great deal to make this a reality. First of all, let me thank Lori O'Donnell for all the work... For all the work that she's put into this budget season. Not only did she create a budget, but put it into a new format that can be delivered electronically to all of our constituents. Lori is already working to make improvements to this book, and she truly needs to be commended for her efforts. The other members of the cabinet did their part to develop a strategy in which we could come in under the BET guidelines. We really worked hard to find the most appropriate path so that we would not impact the classroom. This is a true group effort, and I'd like to recognize Irene and Bob, Kim, and Mary for their ideas and for making the difficult decisions in November and December that led us to a one-point-nine, one-point-nine-five increase over the previous year's budget. But a twenty million-plus capital plan that will fund multiple projects across the district. I want to thank the members of the Board of Education for helping to guide us all in the process, and then going to multiple meetings the last few weeks to sell our budget to both the BET and the RTM. Finally, I'm truly grateful to the members of our community and our elected officials who saw the value added in our budget and voted to approve it. This past week, Mr. Peter Strasky and I led a tour of the Retired Men's Association around our grade high school. We visited classes in the areas of world language, mathematics, science, and social studies, and in lab. It was great to see their interactions between the students, teachers, and our visitors. I received an email from one of our guests, which stated that the tour was both excellent and informative. The personalized learning encourages critical thinking and independence, leading to the pursuit of excellence. Another celebration, folks. Finally, it's important to note that a number of our administrators are attending a conference this week on Making Learning Personal. They are completely engaged in ensuring that this strategy will ensure that we will meet the goals of our strategic plan. Thank you, Peter.
All right, next up is reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. We'll start at this end.
Well, curriculum council, our meeting was postponed, but we're looking forward to working on our work, Megan, and the council, taking the capacities of the graduate through down to elementary school, which is, I think, gonna be very exciting. For the Alliance for Education, it's always a great time of year. It's when the reaching out brands are determined, and there's some wonderful things going on in our school district related to that, so I think it's a thing to be thankful for while we're banking. It's another source of money for us, which is a really wonderful thing. PGC, we got all kinds of stuff going on here, so we'll be talking about that. And Strategic Plan, I would say, I guess, really, I've been a little busy, so we're a little on pause for that, but we've got some plans to work on.
New Lebanon on time and under budget still. The remediation of known issues in the building, because they needed to be removed, is over. So the next phase is actually taking the building down, which is actually really exciting. I know the students are looking forward to it. Can't imagine why. I think there were a couple of requests for bricks. And then the phase work will happen over the summer. Once the building is down, to recreate the parking lot at the top, and then they'll start with the field on the bottom. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the campus there. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our discussion items. The first item is TEPL. I don't know who's leading that, Ms. Mayo.
So Dr. Caravella did all the work here in terms of putting together this packet, but she's in Atlanta with a number of our other administrators. Although, I don't know how she didn't get back here, because Mr. Peter Strasky was there, and he's back. I wonder about that one. Anyway, to take you back in time a little bit, back in the thirteen, fourteen school year, we determined that the TEPL indicators that we had in place needed to be updated and revised. So we revised four of the original thirteen TEPL indicators into three more rigorous indicators that represent the instructional shifts required by Connecticut Common Core Standards and Next Generation Science Standards. TEPL Committee drafted a new indicator that addressed the district's expectations for digital and information literacy. These new indicators were piloted with individual schools, and then the following years, we gathered data, and then the last three years, all the schools have been using these three new indicators. The teachers do not receive ratings on these indicators as of yet, but they do receive feedback on the new indicators. So the three new indicators that we had discussed back in thirteen, fourteen were critical thinking and creative problem solving, analyzing and constructing arguments based on evidence, and communication and collaboration. So again, next year, we plan on rating the teachers on those three new indicators along with the digital literacy one. We also, while we were at it, Mrs. Nadell and I co-chaired a TEPL 2 committee, where we did a lot of work in terms of changing our, not the process and the way, the timeline and anything like that, but we moved from, I think, six sets of rubrics, one for media specialists, one for social workers, one for... To one common rubric for all the people that are in the service delivery mode. So we changed that. We piloted with the guidance staff at Greenwich High School, and last year, all of the teachers that are service, like psychologists, social workers, et cetera, they all used this indicator last year, and we were very pleased with it. We also made these changes because TEPL 1 was really for teachers who were really leading a classroom, and TEPL 2 is for people that are delivering services, maybe one-on-one or in small groups. So it's a different service delivery, and we thought they needed to be rated differently. So I have here with us, Judy's here to talk about TEPL 2, Mary's on TEPL 1, let's see, Annette, are you, Annette here? Annette, ready's on TEPL 1. I was on TEPL 1 since it started. I think I came with the package, and so if you have questions about this, we are ready to answer them.
All right, discussion. Ms. Dean.
My question is on TEPL 1. For classroom teachers, there's a good indicator called planning and assessment, but the language within that doesn't specifically call for data-driven decision-making. It calls for assessment and measures, but that's much more general than actually taking the data and changing instruction based on what you're seeing in student outcomes. It's a different sense. So I was wondering if any of you that worked on that committee would like to speak to the use of data by classroom teachers?
I believe, I'll have to look, but that is included in a different indicator, not in planning and assessment. I'll pick a quick look there, but I believe it is.
Mr. Neal.
The state statute says that, it's right here in the report, that there should be an evaluation of the future evaluation plan that includes strengths, areas needing improvement, and strategies for improvement, and the superintendent shall report on that. So are we expecting a report that talks about the strengths and weaknesses of this program and what needs to be improved in another report, or was it supposed to be part of this report identified by the state statute?
We gather that data at the end of the year, every year, through our new calendar electronic system, so we don't have that yet. We gather that data both from the instructional staff and from the administrative staff.
So that should be one of the reports that we'll get early in September, or by the end of school year?
I would say September, because it's gonna take a little while to gather the data.
Okay, so that should be one of the things that get reported to the board?
But that, part of that, Barbara, is the purpose of the committee. So the committee meets on a regular basis with input from administrators, teachers, and the GEA and GOSA, and they bring that information to the committee, and we use it when we create the rubrics, when we tweak the rubrics. So it's an iterative process that happens throughout the meeting schedule that we...
But the statute says that it should be reported to the board, the strengths, weaknesses, and the strategies for improvement.
Okay.
Dr. Fran. So I'm a little afraid that I'm gonna sound stupid here, but I think we try to teach our students to take risks and sometimes ask questions when you're not sure it's gonna be a good one. But I'm actually not really clear what the purpose of this report is. And if I read it correctly, it seems to me like pages two through two fifteen are basically a plan that exists. Is that correct? And page one was kind of a summary of the plan and some information there. And this is a plan that's been in place for 2018 to 2020. So is there anything new with this plan, other than the fact that I think next year we'll be starting to measure? Is there anything else that's new in this?
Well, we did a lot of work on the revision of the four new indicators. We did a lot of work on there, but that's basically the new part of the...
In this version?
In this version.
Okay. And I'm sorry, can you just follow up? And are there any... So I would sort of have thought when I was starting to read this that there might be goals included. So, you know, what we would expect in terms of, we are evaluating our teachers, this is what we're seeing, and then we're, you know, hoping to see that this improves in a year or in two years. So something about the measurements that we're seeing, I was sort of doing a quick scan as I was thinking about this question, to the rest of our agenda, when do we see the actual outcomes of this, and, you know, what are other plans that we might have to try and improve those outcomes?
You know, as I said before, they'll get rated for the first time this coming school year, nineteen, twenty.
But I thought that was just on the new measurements. We've been doing all kinds of ratings previously.
Oh, yeah, we've been, we've had the nine standard ones that we've been using all along, but we will be... along, but we will be rating the new ones for the first time next year.
Mr. Neal and Mr. Sher.
So I think I'm staying with that theme, Gaitan, and correct me if, sorry, this is a big report. There were a lot of words. So my takeaway was, and maybe it's in here, if we take our 900 teachers, and we've been doing this for a while, I guess, how do they fall in terms of meeting expectations, being above expectations? And then how, and I would think because of our hopefully strong rubric and our professional learning, which I know we'll have issues this coming year, has improved, right? Is the curve moving in the right direction? Are more people moving, like our students? Are they moving with our students, hopefully, in a positive direction? And if they're not, what's the recourse?
Well, one of the things that, one of the other reasons why that we changed the rubric itself was because we needed to make it more rigorous for our teachers. So that's, you know, that was one of the main reasons to make these changes. Another one was some of the indicators were highly repetitive, so that was another reason. We will, we conduct a number of evaluations on teachers that are brand-new to the district, years one through four, and then every four years, our tenured teachers do a unit of instruction. It's a very valuable piece because when we see, you can see all the indicators when you go into a classroom and view the unit of instruction. So if a teacher is not, as you said, up to par, then they're evaluated again and again. And then if you look in the statute, there are different plans for teachers who are not meeting the standards.
But also, if you remember, the expectation is that in the now, in the nine foundational expectations, that teachers only move into the process of working on the four new ones if they met criteria, if they meet expectations on the foundational ones. So you should have an expectation that all teachers who are not being evaluated on those nine foundational indicators are meeting expectations on those indicators. And then the four new ones were the ones we were piloting. They were not rated on those, but that's the change that's being presented to you for next year. As we planned, all teachers next year will be rated on the four new ones, the three plus the digital literacy, with the expectation that the nine will continue to be the foundational.
Ms. Sher. And you know the answer to Kathleen's question.
No, I don't, actually. But I'm going to ask you right now. Wow. For, I'm looking at page, wow, it's a number, that's unbelievable. Twenty-nine of 215. Do you know last year's distribution of the evaluation? We have what, 900, we have met, who's, teachers probably met, 900 or so teachers? Do you know what the district, how many people got it, one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have that right now, Peter. We can get that for you.
Okay, because I'm talking about last year, right? So, okay.
Yes, I do. We have to...
Okay. My second question is, and it relates to the one that goes with this, is, I looked at the committee, and I was super puzzled why our chief human, our people person, our person who's in head of charge of people, isn't on this committee. Why is that?
Shemane's on, Shemane Johnson's on, Assistant Director of Human Resources.
So Bob didn't, we said we had Van on it, we have all the other cabinet, but we just didn't put Bob? Why did we do that?
Well, we've always had, before Shemane took her position...
We had Marge Carr.
We had Marge Carr on it. So we've always had the assistant on the committee.
Okay, is this a ongoing committee? Is this, or is this, this committee works, does...
This committee will meet at least nine or 10 times next year.
We also...
I don't want to tell you how to manage your district, but it seems to me, if we've got our chiefs with everything else on it, we'd probably want to put our chief human people person on it, too. And my last question is, when I'm...
One of the other reasons why Shemane takes the lead, no, no, the other thing is that...
Yeah, I wouldn't take her off and put her on.
She's an expert, she's an expert in the system that we use as well, the talent system.
Yeah, sure, right.
So that's very helpful to have her there, as well as teacher certification. That's the other thing that she brings to the table.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big committee, so I'm guessing the next one will hurt. But my last question was, the, what were the, with GOSA and GEA on the committee, what were their areas of concern in, when, during all the work, that was reviewing TEPL from, I mean, obviously, we implemented this a number of years ago. They probably have a bunch to add when they're changing changes. What things did they highlight? What things did GEA and GOSA highlight about TEPL?
I can ask Carol that question, and then...
Yeah, Peter, the interesting thing about this committee is that as we go through our yearly, you know, schedule, which is nine to 10 meetings, after a bit, it really feels like we don't really know who's playing, who's on what role, because it's very, very cohesive. And our goal is to make sure that the instrument, as it's written, is the best instrument it can be for teachers. In other words, they understand the expectations, they understand the timeline, they know what is really going to be expected of them in the classroom. We also look at it through the point of view of administrators to make sure that, I mean, evaluating teachers is a very difficult job. We want to make sure that it's realistic, that it's streamlined in a sense. And so when you ask for what does GOSA and GEA bring, I think we all, we all bring the same thing. We want to make sure that this document is fair, is somewhat user-friendly. We've been working a lot on streamlining some of the online aspects of it and making the forms a little bit more, more doable for everybody. We want to make sure that everyone is clear about what the expectations are, so that if it comes up that something is not okay, either with performance, that the teacher had the best chance, and that the administrator also had the best chance possible to do a good job. So we're mostly interested in whether it's a, whether this document as written can actually drive teaching and learning in the right direction.
I'm sorry, Sarah, I didn't say, I heard you say something that I didn't say, so I didn't want to issue you with that line of logic. I wasn't asking what you guys bring to the table. Obviously, you bring a lot to the table, right? That really wasn't my, I think you said, what did they bring? That wasn't my concern. My concern was, usually when you have a working group like this, everybody has their perspective. That's why you assemble a working group like this, because everybody has a different perspective, and you want to get all the perspectives, right? That's why Mary's on it from a different perspective, Irene's on it from a different perspective, or, you know, or Anne's on it from a different perspective. Everybody has their kind of role to play. I get that, I'm pretty clear on the part of it, which sounds like it was a cohesive team. I hope that's always the case. My, but everybody always brings, usually, to these kinds of conversations, hey, I've got this perspective, and through my perspective, here's what I may or may not be concerned about, particularly in your case, representing 900 teachers quite directly. So I was curious what it was that you, or GOSA, the principals, who have to actually do the work to evaluate the teachers, what did they raise as challenges they see out in the buildings as opposed to all the people that are sitting in Haverhill, and with TEPL as we've implemented, right? This is kind of like TEPL version two or three. I'm always interested in what happens at the next version.
Right, so, so Mary's got her hand on the mic, and I know that Annette wants to talk. I would say that three years ago, when these new indicators were written, what GEA and GOSA brought is, you know, this is going to take some time to flesh out and get used to, and we don't, this is like, this is a brand-new way of evaluating. Let's, let's ease it in, give everybody a chance to, you know, we favor giving everybody an opportunity to try it out, to be able to take risks to work with it before what you're hearing is coming this year, which is the, you know, the time when the actual true marking of it is going to count. So I would say that's what we brought, you know, three years ago, always thinking about, how do you phase in something that reflects a whole new way of teaching? So that's, that's how I would answer, that's something that we brought a few years back.
So I'm Annette Ready, and I'm one of the teachers that's on the TEPL committee. I am also a middle school English teacher at Central Middle School. So you had mentioned asking about, like, the challenges that GEA saw and things like that. There, it's hard to identify a certain challenge, because a lot of what they were doing is, was a matter of making sure that everything was spaced out and purposeful and comfortable for teachers. So there's no real challenge, because it just all folded out in a timely manner.
I would say, though, that something we have talked about is the consistency across schools and evaluators of making sure that people are being as true to the rubric as possible, so that what it looks like in one building is what it looks like in another building. And we even talked about, we work with Todd White as a consultant in the committee, going back to a process we had used years ago of having a group of administrators watch a videotape of a teacher teaching, have the rate, using the rubric, then comparing to making sure that we're all on the same page in terms of, how did you rate that? How did you see that? So it's, the consistency is, I think, a concern we always have when you have a district this size, but I think we are very cognizant of it on the committee and have spoken, and I know at our last meeting, we talked about, how do we make sure that once we roll this out, we keep as much as possible that consistent application of the rubric across schools and subject areas?
Ms. Dean.
I'm going to rephrase my question. There are student learning objectives, which is really where the teacher must delve into a range of data to come up with objectives, so that they meet certain student learning goals, and it's up to the teacher to design what the goal will be. So I'd like to know what proportion of our teachers are able to achieve what they designed as a student learning objective by the end of their evaluation?
On the, I mean, if they're slow?
I mean, is it the majority? Is it half? Is it a minority? Because that's where my question, which I began with, gets to the heart of the matter, which is, we're ready now to actually put into practice all of the data that we put in place through our assessments, and that's a good way, I think, to monitor that.
Ms. Olsen.
It's gone in like three directions, but first to get back to Mary. It's great to hear that practice. I know that a lot of teachers will grade each other's papers just to make sure they're all on the same page and the same level of rigor. So can you speak a little bit to how that came back? Did you find that the administrators were rating the teachers in a pretty similar way? Did you find that they were all sort of comparable?
We haven't done that exercise with the new four indicators yet. We did it when we first rolled out the 13, and we talked at our last meeting about running that same process again, using the new indicators.
Okay. And then also, I also agree that I think data would be good, just be able to see, you know, here's the numbers, here's the numbers of teachers that are meeting expectations, exceeding, just to be able to know what direction we're going, and also to think about concrete goals for educators. I also was just curious, and this is just, you know, what were we doing before this, I guess? Because I know that, you said that TEPL's been around for a long time, but if we're phasing this in, how were, what were we doing before this?
So we were doing a lot of similar things, so a lot of what we did was combining indicators. So it's not really a matter of doing anything too different. We've also added in things for our digital expectations and our personal learning expectation. So just to kind of keep up with the times. But other than that, it's pretty much the same.
I just wanted to go back to your idea of parent input. I think originally, when Ralph and I were on this from the very beginning, there was talk of a role for parents in providing some input. I'm not sure if that's still part of the state requirement or not. Anyone answer that question?
There is a, there is a stakeholder, there's a school, usually the school writes a goal for the school, that's, I think, 5% of the teachers' evaluation.
Ten. Ten. Okay. Yeah, there's a, 10% of the evaluation is a parent, parent feedback goal. It's not currently feedback on an individual teacher. It's an aggregate for the whole school in terms of the goal they have for, let's say they have a goal to enhance teacher communication with teacher, with parents, for positive reasons. You know, teachers get, you know, communicated with for, when it's, when it's sometimes not positive. So if there's a school goal around parent interaction or parent communication, then whether that, how that comes out at the end of the year, that's pulled together and counts into everyone's, everyone's working on it together, because they get the same score. And that's true in each of the schools, they get, okay, one more question? This is a totally different question. TEPL is a state-required committee, and according to the state statute, if it's a state-required committee, then the committee agenda and times of meetings must be posted along with minutes. I have, and maybe it's my computer skills, I've been unable to find this information on the website. So I'm not sure where it is. I've been looking, we're supposed to...
I know that Anne, Anne is responsible for drafting the agendas, and they come out to all committee members prior to that. Whether they're actually posted on the website or not, I can't answer that.
Well, all that requires that they be posted along with minutes and the meeting time. So hopefully, we'll see that on our website.
I think it certainly is.
Barbara, she posted the meeting from two months ago, and she came to me and told me she forgot to post the last meeting that they had, but she's been instructed to post meetings from now on. And since this is a meeting that occurs on a regular basis, she will post that at the beginning of the year.
Well, that, just like policy governance, we publish our list of meetings, then we publish our agenda right before the meeting, and then we publish minutes. And it seems to be that we don't do that with other committees. Food Services does it, but we've been lax in our alignment with what's required by FOI and state statutes.
Ms. Steph.
Just one more question. And it's probably buried in this report, so sorry if it's obvious, but there seems to be a lot of focus on testing. I think someone mentioned that. And especially, there's been a lot of prep, I know, around SBAs, which is anecdotally, it seems, in every school. So that must be a huge component, I assume, of the teacher evaluations. Can you tell me where that sits in here?
Teachers have, as part of their, as part of it, they have slows, which are student learning outcomes, which they identify. The state of Connecticut, with advocacy by, advocated by CEA and supported by teachers throughout the state, has, by statute, disallowed standardized test data from being used in teacher evaluation. Yeah, we're one of the, all these states, and it's very appropriate. It was a hard-fought win, but we don't, we don't use that.
But we use other evaluation data, because that's 45% of the end of the report.
So sorry, Ralph, can you then give me an example of...
Well, if you take math, for example, at high school, if you're, you could choose to use your Alcova one final as that assessment data.
Just so we're level setting, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong. TEPL measures inputs. TEPL doesn't measure outputs. It measures practice. To your point, the teacher unions in the state have worked very hard and hard for to block the use of outcomes, measurable outcomes, as measures for evaluating teachers. So we don't, we as board don't have that, unless I'm wrong. Every time we've talked about this, we don't have, it's a little weird, because in the rest of the world, we're usually measured on outcomes, but that's just the way it is, right? I mean, we, what is it you're allowed to measure on outcomes consistently across the district that all teachers can be evaluated on? I don't, I don't, we're not allowed to do that under law.
Well, the outcomes that are measured are, is a teacher gets to decide with input and in collaboration with their evaluator, what... and in collaboration with their evaluator, what they will look at as a student learning outcome. And every teacher has to have two. And so that outcome is geared towards the teachers, the students that that teacher actually has, the level that they have. When you talk about outputs, let's say it's SATs. A teacher of a, the reason why we advocated for and the legislature agreed that a standardized test such as SATs should not be used as part of a teacher evaluation is because if you are teaching a very remedial class where there's no way with an SAT score to add the nuance that that was a certain level class, the growth may have been tremendous in that class, tremendous, but the actual score, so that's why. And so we pick, so teachers get to choose.
But Ralph, if I'm not mistaken, as an example, and I don't want to get into SBA and all that, you know, we can have that debate elsewhere, but as an example, if I have a teacher whose job it is to teach AP classes, right? There's no mechanism that we're allowed to use to measure how many kids met, we're just not allowed to do that. Is that, is that right? I can set a goal for all teachers who teach AP? I don't think I can do that.
Ms. Jay.
There are student learning outcomes that each teacher designs for themselves to lead. However, you must use measurable data. It's not the case that we don't measure student outcomes. It is built into the TEPL, it's built into every single district's evaluation.
Someone was saying, we can't set one, we can't set one to measure.
Not a universal measure, but the teacher has to choose on page 113 from a range of things, report cards, student test scores, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, for example, if you're teaching AP chemistry, you could have a slow about the student's achievement using a rubric of their labs so that eighty percent of your students would get, you know, five or better on a seven-point rubric on their labs in physics. The natural consequence to that is if kids are doing really well day to day, on, and I'm making stuff up because I'm not a science teacher, but, you know, one would think if they're doing that well on their labs, it would lead to them doing well on the AP exam. But you're not measuring them on the AP exam, you're measuring them on your slow as your instruction in the classroom.
Which you control. It's the part that you control.
So like for me, I use the star reading test and I know that other teachers use like the star math test and that's our benchmark that we do throughout the course of the year.
One of the things that I want to say before we move on to our next topic is that this rubric, this model was created as a coaching model for our staff. So we're trying with the administrators and the teachers, working together collaboratively to improve their instruction going forward. As a coach, it's not a scorecard, it's a coaching model. And I think that's one of the things that we forget, we say TEPL, but then we forget about the professional learning piece. So if a teacher doesn't do a good job with, say, questioning, then the administrative job is to point out that fact, but also to give them reasons why questioning is so important in the lesson, and also to direct them towards professional learning so they can improve their craft. And then go back and put their question again the next time they go in. So it's coaching. A lot of it's, it's a lengthy process, but if it's done well, we get better teachers every year.
Dr. Francis.
So a couple of things. One, I think somewhere, and I think it's sort of implied, but I think it should be more stated, that the purpose of this is ultimately student success. Student success. Right? I mean, it talks a lot about, this is about, you know, teachers getting a good evaluation or one that they can learn from, but ultimately the whole reason, of course, we want our teachers to be happy, but ultimately, I think, we want to make it clear that that's sort of students the center of us. I think, I think this is, to me, not really a board level report. Huge amounts of detail in here that I don't think are really sort of the kinds of things that we should be delving in. I think there should be more information about, you know, what are the goals of the program? Whether it be, you know, making sure that there's consistency in evaluation, if that's something that we think is an issue. You know, looking at the data from the teachers and we want to pick this area within these measures and that's the one that we'd like to see better for the next year. You know, what are, what is the feedback that's come back from, over the year of things that should be changed? I don't really feel like I should be in there going, okay, this is what the median level evaluation is for this step of a rubric. That's not really a, I mean, you know, if we want it as an appendix, but, you know, that actual report should be something that's really a board level, a higher level kind of way to approach this.
We probably gave you a lot more information than you really needed, but we were mandated to come back to the board to demonstrate and show you the four new indicators and what we had done to the original, the changes that have been made to the original plan.
When did we ask?
Back when we started this, back in fourteen fifty.
Mary, did you want to say something? Just that this, this update today is for you to understand the process and the changes we're making to the process. This is not the report out on how teachers are doing on the process. So I think some of your questions are about how does it actually pan out and what a teacher's look like as a profile. That's not the purpose of what we were presenting tonight. Tonight is just so you understand how we're moving along with the process that we've been presenting to you for the past, I don't know, five or six years. We are now to the point where we will be rating teachers on the new indicators next year and you can expect to see a report about performance as opposed to process.
Mr. Scher.
Just in terms of the agenda, I was trying to, when do we get the TEPL? For the years I've been on board, we used to get, hey, here's the results. When is that on our agenda?
We haven't had it this year, so we probably will want it for September so that we get the end of this year data. I mean, the only thing they could present us this year would be last year's data if you want.
I understand that.
I think, I think people have requested it. I think you could send that to the board and append that.
Can we just make this back to what you used to?
Yeah, so I'm looking at Dr. Francis. She's tracking this for building out next year's agenda plan. Sorry. It's captured. Kim's got it too. Okay. Very good. Anything else on TEPL? Please don't take this out of my children's right. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the Cardinal Field bleacher update. So Ms. O'Donnell, Ms. Mayo?
Yes, Peter, thank you.
We, we updated this, this document on Board Docs, I think we did it today, as a matter of fact. One of the reasons we did that is because we are in the process of getting quotes for renting bleachers for the fall sport season. But we needed to get the board's input on two things. One, do we, do we go and rent bleachers for the upcoming fall season or do we try to repair the bleachers that are standing there right now? I think that's what we wanted to have a bit of a discussion on tonight.
Mr. Scher.
Ralph, I have a question for you. I think multiples, multiple members of the board have heard from, some people, some interested people in the sports community, sports community specifically, who have seemed to be of the one view, I think it's an educated one of you, the way they showed me, I hope, I think they were going to you, but I don't know, that you originally told us last time it was going to cost $250,000 just to shore up the current bleachers so that they could be used. Yeah, they, for some reason, these, this group, which seems to have a set of engineers and construction people involved, that was surprising to me, seem to think that it can be done for about half that amount. Have you guys discussed that with them and evaluated it? Because if that can be done for the amount of money they're talking about or in that neighborhood, and then this proposal is in the neighborhood, so let's say that's $125,000, $150,000, and then this proposal is in the neighborhood of between ninety and sixty to ninety, I guess, now all of a sudden I'm wondering, as those numbers start to converge, I'm starting to wonder what the smart play is.
One of the issues, Peter, is that the people I've talked to that have been calling about repairing, they're not engineers.
Have you talked to them?
Yes, I have. So we, not, not, just to start this process on the old bleachers, we have to get engineers to do the design for us, to fix them. That's between sixty and seventy thousand dollars just for the design. And then it could be up to $300,000 for the repair. But I wanted to bring it to you before we ruled that out and moved on to rental bleachers.
Did, 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 did we, did we do that and get full bids and everything for that?
We're getting, Dana's getting quotes. That's what he's doing right now. So as we get them, we're going to share them with you.
Did you talk to those people that maybe put their money where their mouth is and Did you talk to the people who are suggesting that these things could be repaired, to ask them to put their money where their mouth is and maybe donating the cost of doing it?
That's not off the table. That's actually on the table.
Ms. Stowe.
Okay. Dan and Lori, looking at this report. So first of all, I'm excited that we have a Cardinal Stadium approval for the long term, right? Let's celebrate that for a moment. But so in the short term, we need to address something come the fall sport season. And looking at your numbers rather than numbers that I don't have in front of me, it suggests that just to shore them up, it would be $211,000 to $283,000. Is that correct? That's, if we were to go that route.
Just to clarify, the estimate, an estimate was provided in order of magnitude, I guess, if you will. However, we would need to have that work scoped out and designed before we could actually go out to bid.
Okay.
And that'll cost money as well.
Exactly. So it seems like the better plan at this point is to come up with temporary bleachers for the fall season and to then make a choice between one and two here. Is that what you're asking us?
That's what we're suggesting.
Okay. So, can I keep going?
Thank you.
Okay. So in, can you just tell me, I guess, why we wouldn't take down, because we're going to demolish them anyway, right? So I recognize it's a little bit more money, but why wouldn't we just go with number one? Because we're going to eventually have to get rid of the bleachers rather than going with this incremental step?
It doesn't matter.
Why just, why wouldn't we?
So I guess while you're pondering that, one question I have about it, you know, we probably need to ask the time planner, is if we remove them, does that create an issue where we now don't have something that we're replacing rather than actually constructing something new?
Right. And this is all stuff that we'll be working through over the next couple of weeks, but we did ponder, and timing is really, I think, you know, what it'll come down to in terms of, you know, being ready with the design, going out to bid, et cetera.
Yeah. Can I just make one clarification? It's been misrepresented that the Board of Ed or Mr. Mayo closed the bleachers. We need to get that straight. This was an act by the Building Committee, I'm sorry, by the Building Department of the Title of Greenwich, along with our suggestions and our opinions and the documentation from the design team, the engineer. Read the paper.
And the risk manager as well.
So. So the, the other point I want to make is the two options you have in front of you, these aren't set dollars. These are two options. And basically what it comes down to is where a temporary set of bleachers can be placed and how the front row of those bleachers compare to the field level. Option B, your first row of bleachers is at field level. Option one, you're up about three feet similar to what is there now. So I want to make that very clear. So it's, there's, and these numbers are from two different organizations who both offer the same type of systems, both A and B. So when we do decide on what we're going to do, it's going to go out for bid on whatever we decide, whether it's a field level, whether it's an elevated system. So, you know, it's, the numbers are an order of magnitude number as well.
So I just, I know you're asking for a preference. My preference is whatever's going to work in the space and along with whatever we get back from the Planning Department about, about what's going to be best for how to move the whole project forward. But I do have a question for you. So I know there's money in what was just approved by the RTM to take down the old bleachers. What are we going to do for funding for temporary bleachers? Because I've been worried about the timeframe of making a request. The BET meets often, but the RTM has one more meeting this year, so.
So my thinking is that our capital budget has a contingency in it and I think this is a perfect item for that. It is a rental, but it is related to the reconstruction of the bleachers, which was part of the plan. So in my mind, it would be a capital funded item.
As in the July one money?
Correct.
And I think what we ought to do, just preference wise, is talk to the Chair of the BET Budget Committee who's sitting in the room and listening to the conversation, just to make sure that they're comfortable with that as well.
Ms. Jay.
Thanks for the document. It's really clear and easy to understand. I favor option A, or the first one on the page, because I'm worried about encroaching on the track. I think that would be a terrible outcome and that's one of the risks of taking the other set of rental bleachers. I don't mind the elevation of the first row and I like that it has the highest capacity. So for me, it's a clear choice of option A.
Dr. Francis.
Not, not that I think this is going to happen, but what if we need to go past December? Do we have any sense of the cost if we're going, if this is the cost from September to December, is this something that we can just extend? Is it going to be roughly in the same cost price range and? Well, I wasn't sure because you don't have to install it, so if they're.
I don't understand. You're, you assume that we would be renting past that date?
Well, are we, are we a hundred percent sure we're going to have permanent bleachers ready to go with them?
We could get, we could get it per monthly rate, that's not a big deal. But the longer they stay in place, the more impact they have on rebuilding the new system. So it's not like, I mean, you're not using the track or you're not using the field from the middle of December through March. So that, to me, that doesn't make sense, but we can, we can get monthly rates for you.
Right. So one of the things we discussed at the Cardinal Field Committee was whether we actually could start constructing new bleachers as early as September, but that, of course, would impact the use and the ability to put bleachers there where we want them. So the rental basically keeps us on the same timeline we originally envisioned, which is after July one, when funds become available, starting the design work, doing the fabrication, and then installation would occur when all the fall sports are over, which I think was somewhere around December 10th. It's, it's basically the last football game plus two weeks because if they make the playoffs, that's a possibility. And of course, while we want to win our football games, we want to get the bleachers installed. So the idea is to have rentals through that period. The rental would be removed if we've already taken down the old bleachers, they could begin construction and fabrication, you know, construction onsite as early as the last game.
Other discussion. Mr. Scher.
I differ with others. I want the lowest cost option that gives students, who are particularly those who will be seniors, a great experience so that they can come to games and they can have a great time. Everything else to me is extraneous. It bothers me spending any extraneous dollars of any kind, particularly when we just pass the budget, that ends up cutting teachers and cutting teacher training. I think it sends a remarkably bad signal. If we, in either ways, it's capital versus operating contingencies, all that kind of, we can talk ourselves into it, but I think it sends a remarkably bad signal. We've dealt a bad hand here. We have the bad hand. I think we should create a great experience for students. There were people who will whine about a press box and all the rest of it. I think we should look to make this as cost effective as possible to give students to give students a great experience and everything else, people will just have to enjoy.
Which is why, Peter, we're, we're leaning towards the rental option, because it's the least expensive way to go. And it'll give our kids a good experience going to the game and watching the bleachers.
Dr. Francis?
I just wanted to know what the bleachers you're suggesting we not do. So, not the press boxes? Or is there something else?
I would do 61 over 90. I would, I would. The track team doesn't run, they don't use that space that way in the fall. Well, they don't, they don't run me. It doesn't run me. You're going to take the whole track? Right. You're not going to take the whole track, right? That's what it said here, right? Harden the track, right? Where the fence is, right? Maybe the first lane, right? That's why I... I'm sorry, please, Bill.
That's exactly right.
No, no offense to the press, but I think if we had to go one season to better serve the students without press bots. I know that there were concerns about the cameras they have out there, but I think those can be mounted on a pole and be dispensed with. And I do want to stress, this is temporary, right? Our plan all along is to replace these bleachers and have them ready hopefully by, by the spring. So, if we stick on the timeframe, hopefully, we'll get there. All right. Any other discussion on this item? Thank you for everything you're doing to move this forward. You know, it's the next step after graduation. No, we don't even need to vote on this. This is an administration... Right. If there needs an additional appropriation, we would have to take that up in a meeting. And I believe the RTM is due for tomorrow. So, we would have to then go talk to the moderator of the RTM after we talk to the BET and stagger that if there's a need for an interim. So, we, we would deal with that. But I think we'll, we'll connect with our BET liaisons and sort that out. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will move on to our next item, which is the Annual Operations Report. Ms. O'Donnell under myriad of departments.
The Annual Operations Report has been slightly modified in terms of format. From last year, I was trying to follow the, and I'm sorry, I don't recall the board policy, but that sets out the format for evaluating programs with respect to identifying strengths and weaknesses and anticipating foreseeable and potential future needs and then providing data where relevant. So, I'm sort of in a transformation year, I guess, if you will, with the report, as I try to move toward that, that format. So, you'll see some of it sprinkled throughout, and then hopefully, next year, we'll, we'll have a better format for you. I do want to mention that in this year's report, I added a business office. They weren't in there previously, so there is some information there. And I'm happy to take any questions on the report.
So, Lori, I guess I'm, I'm curious. What are your goals for the next year? And I'm asking that because as I read through this and I think about the Bloom Shapiro report, there are some areas, obviously, we feel like we're understaffed in. So, I guess, what are your goals as you start to work on budget development? Where, where are you going to take us?
Specifically to Bloom Shapiro, to the capital side?
To start, but also just how your departments are staffed, because obviously, you're, you're thinking about that as part of all of us.
Right. So, with respect to Bloom Shapiro, we've already started with the implementation phase. Right now, what we're doing is, we actually just had a meeting where we're beginning the process of identifying standards or drafting standards for the capital planning process, actually documenting and writing up procedures. And this includes all sort of facets of the capital planning process, from conceptual to, to close out. So, that'll, that'll be the first step, is really outlining what our framework is, what are, what are the guidelines. And so, that would be a good tool for, for the department, for, for anybody. That work will happen over the next couple of weeks. And then, we're hoping to move into the next part of the, the project, which would be, which would happen over the summer, where we would select a couple of projects from each fiscal year, perhaps, and hopefully, starting with '20 as well, and implementing those procedures and templates, et cetera, to apply to, to, to the upcoming years' projects and then certainly those that we're going to be planning for, for '21. I think once we go through that process in the summer, we'll get a better sense for what the impact will be to our departments. It is a big change. You know, it's certainly a culture change. It's needed. It's definitely needed. But we really need to gauge what it will need for our department, and I don't think we'll know that until the summertime.
Ms. O'Neill, do you have something?
I want to ask about the safety and security part. First of all, this report was really very easy to read and, and very helpful. So, on safety and security, to do with security for student travel, I would like to see something in there that states that student travel should adhere to board policy, because we do have a new policy this year on that. And I do like the idea that you are trying to digitize the travel forms for students so that's easier to keep a record of. I think anything we can digitize is extremely helpful. And that's all I have on that.
Okay. Ms. Dayton?
Thanks for the report. I was wondering, as part of Bloom Shapiro or even outside of that, how will you change your working practices with town departments like Planning and zoning, with Roland Geiger, with the town administrator, so that projects that we know are in the pipeline have way advanced planning? I know about the process part of Bloom Shapiro. I get that. And I get the new software tracking tool. But I'm talking more about the relationship, the human side of making things work.
I feel like we've been really working at that since I got here. However, more specific to Bloom Shapiro, part of the standards, and I know this sounds sort of simple, but part of this checklist, if you will, will actually have line items for, does a site require permitting? You know, if so, you'll have to consult with whomever. And so, it, it's literally a checklist to make sure we cover everything and that we're consistent with every single project that we do. So, I'm really, I'm really looking forward to that. But I, I do feel that, I feel like we've done, you know, a really good job trying to form the right relationships with the town, including the Town Finance Office. I think we always have challenges, right? I mean, there's always something, there's always something to improve upon. And, and we, we, we try to do that all the time. So, I don't expect it to really end.
Dr. Francis?
I think this is kind of related, but adding on to that, you know, one concern is we have so many big projects that are coming, as we're going through the master facility plan. So, I think it's critical to kind of know, as you're saying, what the points are. And I think I've, I've stated that a few times. We're a soup to nuts of how we get through projects. How do we come up with the idea? Who needs to be involved? When do we get different people involved? But I guess the other question is, you know, having the person, the manpower, the somebody who's actually sitting there pushing it, not just saying, okay, when it happens, I'm checking the box. Kind of having that manpower to that and, and sort of how you feel or who you would imagine would be doing that. Because, you know, one of our issues in getting funding is them saying, but we don't get projects done. And so, part of that, and of course, it's not completely in our control, whether the BET gives us the money or whether they put an extra requirement on or whether we get, you know, the MI that we want. But at least there needs to be someone on our side who's kind of pushing each step and making sure we're being uphearted. Is that sort of part of the discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. So, again, going back to, and I really do have to start back with just the, go back to just the foundations of this all, right? Because, because that's where the guidance comes in. So, having the standards, having, having those checklists help us go through this methodical process for each, for each capital project. So, we, we know that that document will be there for whomever comes on to oversee the project. In terms of oversight, we, we now do, we have a project manager on staff. But each capital project that's been built into the FY '20 budget has been built as a complete, has been built as a complete project budget. And in that includes what we call soft costs, our monies for hiring project managers. Okay? So, if there are certain projects that we feel would benefit from an outside consulting company, and we do have one that we work with, then we can go to them and assign them, you know, five or six projects for them to oversee. They would then follow those standards and checklists. And so, we'd all be on the same page, consistent with our methodology.
Sure.
What is a vig, a vig, a vigilante viewing? It's in the safety cameras? It's something? I was just wondering. It said something about something, so we... We have some system where all of our feeds lead into someplace? Like we have some on the...
Right.
Some central room where you can see all the different stuff?
Yes. But it's also about bringing all these systems onto one sys, one software system.
Ms. O'Neill?
Under facility rentals, I think, under the number of events for 2017, 2018, I think that number should be 6982.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct.
The other thing is, I'm grateful for the clarification about what is required in terms for long-term rentals. I think it's, that clarification is a long time in coming. So, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Mayor, you want to...
Yeah. I just wanted to commend Lori and Dan for, they work very well with their counterparts across the field, as I call it. They work well with Amy Seaver. She's involved in a good number of our projects. With Planning and Zoning, Katie's sitting on our Cardinal Field Committee. Tim Cofflin and Dan are working on their fields together. They get along extremely well. So, I think it's a credit to them, to those two. And they also, you know, Roland and Peter Menarzki, they probably, Lori probably talks to them daily. So, it's, it's a good relationship and something we want to build upon.
Dr. Francis?
I just always, also wanted to point out, I think it was good to, and I think we should think about a couple of things here that will have budget impact. If I understood correctly, the, the, you know, trying to put in a budget for emergency situations, like, does that ever happen? Do we get a flood or other things? So, I mean, I think that's interesting, because we end up so often sort of, you know, borrowing from here or doing from there. And, and, you know, I, I think it's something the town should think about. And I think the other one that we've talked about before, but still, to put in their custodial staffing inadequacies, you know, it is something we should be thinking about.
Anybody else? Thank, thank you very much, Lori. All right. So, next is Lori again. It's the budget procedures. So, just to recap for everybody, Monday night, we got our budget passed for 1920. Tonight, we're kicking off our discussion for the 2021 budget. The irony is, we have three whole days in between. Of course, we were all reviewing that document those three days. So, Ms. O'Donnell?
All right. So, I, that's correct. So, this is the sort of way we kick off, I guess, our, our new budget year planning process. And so, we're getting ready for fiscal year '21. So, it begins with just making sure that we're all on the same page with what the, the budget guidelines will be. So, I provided in the outline, and I've also done a red line here so you can see some of the edits we've made from, from last year. So, the first reference, and there's a lot of edits here, is board policy. And that's only because we've adopted new policies. So, we've tried to reference the new policies in here, and they were just approved like right the month before. So, that's why you see a lot of redlining in the first section under policy. But the procedures are where we get into how we actually go about developing the budget. So, these are the items that, that we try to align our budget development process with as, as we, you know, go through, go through that process up until October, November, when, when the superintendent presents the budget. So, I'm happy to take any questions. I really just, I know there were some items that were added in for last year that I removed, but otherwise, it stays pretty consistent with the prior year.
You missed out.
I was just going to say, obviously, I agree with the policies. It's K, 100%. So, thank you. Just to follow up sort of the prior conversation, do you feel you have to adjust any of your procedures part of the Bloom Shapiro report? Is there anything in here that you think you need to add?
So, at the time that you're going to be reviewing it, no. And I think, right. They could change, I guess, in the future. But as of right now, I mean, I feel like they're pretty high-level procedures and consistent with what we should be looking at each year. So, no, I don't think any changes are needed right now.
So, I've got a question for you. Wanted to understand the supplemental appropriation language. Was that something suggested by policy somewhere? It's new on the first page of the, the document. In purple? At least on here, it's purple.
Supplemental appropriation was part of the K policy recommendation?
Okay. Just wondering where it came from. Great. Thank you. Ms. O'Neill?
On the redlining, you've struck out the line that the board will be included each year in the pre-budget planning and will be informed of options and initiatives. I'm trying to read through the redlining. Early in the timetable. And this was crossed out. I went back and I read, and I unfortunately didn't mark it, the, the policy and the procedure. It seems to me odd that we would strike that line out, that informing the, the board early on about, about the budget. It, it needs to be... Excuse me?
It's the September thing.
I'm sorry.
Tell us in September. It's probably late.
It is.
Yeah. It's late.
But we used to get it in October. It just seems to me that early on, whenever you start the budget process through the Finance Committee, that's where the board should have input. Unfortunately, we always get it so late that we get a list, and then we have to react to a list that's been put together, but we're not always so sure how the process is, is that the board should have input sooner in, in the process.
Ms. Dayton?
So, we're kicking off the next budget, and I know our resources are constrained. But one thing that's brand-new that I'd like to see in the line that says the budget must include is, and you can use any terminology you wish, change my words, I'd like to see a des, a data presentation tool that would communicate to parents the growth of their child. This would be possibly built off the ECRIS system. If you don't like the ECRIS system, fine. You can ditch the ECRIS system. But there has to be now, as a district, a new way to communicate student growth that is visual, that has numbers, and that goes out to every parent in the district.
Ralph, I, or Lori, I don't, I'm, I'm not, maybe I'm losing, maybe I'm losing the plot here. This year, we skipped program evaluations, because we wanted a place to have them. So, we were going to, we were going to have some so that they would then feed this next budget cycle. And it goes to what Ms. O'Neill is, Mrs. O'Neill is talking about, which is, you know, there has to be this place where the board actually gives input and feedback. September, the cake's already been in the oven 20 minutes, and it's got an hour to go, but it's in the oven nonetheless. So, I don't know what you've, how you've sorted this with the board chair, but the agenda, this is, this is, we're going to, we're going to wind up, we're going to wind up with another year of incremental budgeting. And if that's okay for everybody to wind up yet another year of incremental budgeting, then, you know, maybe that's what people are thinking, because we're going to get yet another new superintendent. I, I don't know. It made me uncomfortable, because I thought we were kind of trying to be on a path to do, we weren't going to do all these program evaluations, but some of them we're going to do. And then, the, the other part that's a little sticky for me is, I'm not sure where the Budget Committee plugs into this, but, or is plugging into this process. So, I could just use some clarification if there's something here I've missed.
No, you didn't miss anything, Peter. What, what happened, what happened was that I, I directed Lori to take the Programs and Services piece out of the, the...
Work effort.
Work effort, because it, it did not bring us any value of last year. We just went back and forth on that list of things, and then things got added. Things got, it was just a, a discussion that you put 12 or 13 things on the list, and everybody has a, I mean, we just, I think we wasted a lot of time. I think bringing things forward individually through the Budget Committee, beginning in August, would be a better way to go about this. So, if there's programs that we think are valuable, that we want to see included in the budget, we should do it through the Budget Committee.
I'm sorry, Ralph. Just, I wasn't thinking just, I, I'm not thinking, see, that's part of my snag with this thing, is we always think of programs as that, our problem with our budgeting is, our budgeting is always more. It's add. I think they're, I think the board had gotten... board had gotten to a place where, unless I misunderstood other people, had said, well, in some cases, maybe we want to, you know, it's like, what are we not doing that we need to start, what are we already doing that isn't working that we need to stop, and what is it we need to double down on because it's working, so I didn't view it necessarily as all the adds, I viewed it in some cases as reallocations to programs that were really working and paying off for students, moving the needle on student achievement, you know, helping teachers get better in their practice, so on and so on and so on, I, that's what I thought this was eventually gonna be, and this program evaluation was gonna be the framework to have an intelligent, fact-based conversation instead of, you know, people just get in a room and kind of lean on it based on your opinions.
And I think part of the program review will address some of the issues you just discussed, but it's not, it's not really, not supposed to be a budget tool, it's supposed to be a management tool, so that the people that are working at the Board of Education can look at different programs and to really look at what you're talking about, what's, what is highly efficient and highly effective for kids, what's not, yeah, what's not paying off for our kids and stuff like that, so unfortunately, or fortunately, it's taking longer to put that whole process together, that dashboard together, but we, we did meet with a board member this week to give, to get some perspective from the board on that, and as I said, it's taken us a little bit longer to get where we wanted out, but I think that dashboard will answer a lot of questions.
Ms. Olson and Ms. Dayton.
So I just want to first confirm that we're on track, that program review is, should be next month, that next month's meeting, right, I just want to confirm, that's the first thing, and then also, I just want to say that the budget, though, does generally reflect the values and the, I mean, such that we obviously have minimal say on certain parts of it, but I think that it, I understand that it was intended to somewhat guide where we were going, and that's, so I just wanted to, no, both, like, what, you know, someone said earlier, you put your money where your mouth is, but I think that when you see a program review, you can say, okay, this is, this seems to be really effective with the, with that, based on, are the students achieving, are the teachers improving, like, this is school, are these schools growing, like, you know, are we going in the right direction, so that is guided by how are our programs doing, so I think they are connected.
Ms. Dayton, then, Ms. Reddick.
Let me ask the first question, Ralph, I guess I was directed to you, like, are we, I mean, you're overseeing it, are we on track to still have a program review next month?
We're struggling to get that confirmed, you know, for next month.
All right, Ms. Dayton, then, Ms. Reddick.
I strongly reinforce everything that's been said about the program review, I had understood that that was coming sometime in the month of June, and I'd also like to say that I really don't feel comfortable with one member of the board giving feedback on the dashboard, that person did not gather feedback from the eight of us, so I don't think it's an accurate reflection of what the board thinks about the work in progress.
Ms. Reddick.
My first time trying to talk with my braces, that's why I've been quiet all night, I was under the impression too that the program review would absolutely influence the budget, that we would want to invest in things that we knew were working and making a difference, and think about how we divest from things that weren't working or making a difference.
I'm in the same, I'm in the same place, I would love to see, and we can talk about it during agenda planning, putting program reviews on the June meeting, even if you don't have them all done, at least show us what you've got, and we can have a discussion then about what we think should happen going forward. Mr. Scher.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I never heard the answer to my other question, maybe, how does this fit with what Lauren, your, the Budget Committee, we have a, we made a committee for this, so how's that working, how's those two things fitting together, or, Ralph, maybe you can answer from a process perspective, I mean, this is a process question, how does that, how's that, how's this supposed to work, or do we have work to do to figure out how to make it work?
We created a committee to be that sounding board, that initial sounding board, so rather than trying to get the eight of us together so that we can look at things early on, yeah, September starts to get really late, so if we have to meet over the summer, you know, that's something that we could schedule, and it's really, you know, to help Lori and the administration answer some of the questions, also be communicating to some of the other bodies in town, so we once, when the, oh my God, I'm really stuck here talking, when, when the budget book was redesigned, you know, we brought in the team from the BET, the RTM, so, you know, when it's something like that and we need to facilitate feedback and communication, that's been our role as well, so maybe as some of the procedures change with Bloom Shapiro, if there's a role for us to help in getting that communication out, I think that's a role that the committee could play.
Anybody else on this? Yes, we're still on this report, Ms. O'Neil.
So, on, on, one of the sections, it says, there've been the redline, does request, request for new program or services initiated will be reviewed by the superintendent and should be included, identified need, blah, blah, measurable results, dah, 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 if requests represent a significant change to a program or service or will significantly impact the budget, the request will be presented to the board by the superintendent no later than September, I question the wording of this, as I went back to the policies that are in place now, and it seems to be, I'll read what's here, it says, proposals for course, for new course or program additions and deletions are subject to Board of Education approval and may either be contained within a curriculum review or proposed at other times outside the review process, if we adhere to what's presented before us, we are giving up, we're changing what's in the policy, and we're giving up our opportunity and our responsibility to review any new programs or services that are proposed, so I'm not in favor of keeping the language that's been presented to us, it seems counter to our responsibilities. Actually, I think I'm actually gonna make a motion so that the, that wording that's been presented to us is deleted, and the...
Ms. O'Neil, so this is a discussion item tonight, so it'll be an action item at the next meeting, you can actually, you wanna say what you're interested in doing and give feedback.
So I prefer to go back to the wording that's in the policy that maintains our responsibility and obligation to approve of new programs and initiatives, and that's what I would propose at the next meeting.
Mr. Scher.
This is kind of a question, who on our board, when we get something like this, is supposed to make sure it's aligned, is that, is this something PGC should take a quick proposal, I mean, you guys are masters of what's in our new policies. No, I saw the top, I saw the top part, but I'm wondering if in the actual items that follow beyond that, right, like, right there, Kate, Tom, that, the bullets that come, one through 16, I think it is, or whatever it is, do we, are we, I think that's what Barbara was talking about, are those in alignment too?
Talking about the preceding paragraph. But it's contrary to what we now adhere to.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna vote these things in, and I wanna vote them in, I would just like to be sure anything I'm voting in is already aligned to policy.
Okay, so PGC will look at this and be ready for a discussion when they come back, any other discussion on the budget procedures, all right, and Lori, I guess you've gotten all the notes you took, and we will hear back from you, if you have anything else, Ms. O'Neil.
I'm not sure this is the right place to do it, but I wanted to, these are our budget guidelines, I think I'd like to include that we would look at the services, pupil personnel services for elementary students, that that be part of our budget considerations, it's been brought up year after year after year, and maybe it's been brought up too late, so if we bring it up now and put that as one of the things to be considered when the budget is being developed, we might make some progress. I wanted to include in the budget priorities, or whatever we call them, about emphasizing the need for pupil personnel services for our elementary school students, so is one of the things, yeah, something to consider, because one does wonder about the number of students at the high school needing services, how many of them have come through the system, and as Carol said, and I don't often agree with Carol, but that, I do believe, we've been on the same note, the two of us, for years about the need for help in the elementary grades, and maybe if we caught those kids earlier and gave them support earlier, we might not have some of the situations that we do with the high school now.
Ms. Dayton. Hang on, Lori, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to that, I, I think that's a great point, and I think it's something that can be looked at from a programmatic level, I just wanna be sure that the procedures we've outlined here are, not that they're more generic, but that they're guidelines for us to follow as we're developing the process, so, so I think, you know, we speak to looking at program offerings for efficiencies and effectiveness, and that that work would be part of something like that.
I think it's really important that we incorporate the results of the special education study into this document on budget priorities.
So there was no study, if you remember, they were working with UConn, and I'm...
Well, you can rephrase it, I'm really not hung up on terminology here, I'm trying to get to a larger point, we were looking at best practices with UConn, if there are best practices identified that we want to bring to our district, we need to incorporate them in the budget priorities document, so I have lost track of when we're going to hear more on that and whether it fits with the timing here.
Hopefully, we'll be working with them over the summer, but I can't guarantee that at this point, but I've been in contact with them, and we'll reconnect and try and get it done this summer.
Ms. Reddick.
Just to clarify, this is procedures, not priorities, this is how we go about our processes, nothing to do about defining what we're gonna prioritize, so having said that, do you want to, or do you think we should consider the communication plan as part of our procedures, like how we have to go out and sell the budget and go and get the rest of the people involved, and, and we all have it on our calendars that you don't go away, sorry, Barbara. I, I, I didn't mean it in a, in a, I was joking, Barbara, I was joking, just scramble, so I was joking, Barbara.
All right, any other discussion on this, so we'll take this up as an action item at our next, at our meeting, our business meeting in June, right, and PGC will review it, and obviously, if you have other thoughts or comments, you can email them into Ralph. All right, that said, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is the Parks and Recreation, Fields and Grounds MOU, which I'm so curious about, Mr. Mayo.
So folks, I, what I did was, I took a long, hard look at the, the MOU that was developed for the board on February of 2016, and in the agreement, it does state that at the end of each school year, or when requested, that we can review the agreement and amend it as we feel it be necessary, so that was the biggest takeaway from, for me on that, is that, the other part is, we can use the town administrator, who's agreed to do this, to be our arbitrator if we can't come to agreements that are included in this packet. The other thing that was pretty clear here, not in the, not in the services provider, but the... There's a great inventory of all our fields, not just our fields, but also the fields that Parks and Rec administers, and there's also an athletic field report that's dated by January 19th, which talks about each field, how each field is rated, what was completed on those fields, what work was done in those fields in the 218 calendar year, and the issues, and then planned improvements for 2019, so I think we have a lot of good information here, the question I have for the board is, how would you like me to move forward with this, with the Department of Parks and Recreation?
Mr. Scher.
Ralph, I have two, two questions, or, yeah, two questions with this, I'm glad you brought this up, when we were trying to do the start time thing, this thing was like, you know, like a jawbreaker, it was impossible, two things in here, one of the things we uncovered was, some of these definitions aren't clear, so it's not sure who's on first base, I'm wondering if we don't need a glossary attached to this MOU, so I'll give you, I'll give you a really specific example, hold on. In the MOU, on page 1 of 13, it says, natural turf maintenance and improvements, natural turf new construction renovations, then it says synthetic turf maintenance renovations, the thing we got snagged on is, what's an improvement and what's a renovation, and by the way, I think if you asked everybody, they'd all give you a different answer, so it might be helpful just to help clarify this, of who's responsible for what, we got into a situation, as an example, that was when we discovered that Parks and Rec had developed an entire engineering plan on their own budget for the complete recarpeting, with the complete carpeting of Central Middle School, that was a little bit of a shocker, you weren't here then, it was like, whoa, and then we even asked them, okay, we said, okay, you spent the money, you gave us the plans, they wouldn't give us the plans, it would, I had to go all the way to Ben Brannan and Peter Tessie to get them to give us the plans, so, I know we have a good collaborative relationship with Parks and Rec, but it seems like in this area, it, I would love to get more clarification of what's, who's, because this says who's responsible for what, but I don't know what the definition of what is, I was, what's an improvement, what's a renovation, as an example, okay, the other one that was a little, I'd like to see us advocate for this, it seems a little one-sided to me, if I read the MOU and the documents, it says, the Board of Education has priority for the use of its fields, and then when we're left over, right, we give, we give the remaining to Parks and Rec, but interestingly, it's not really reciprocal, so when Gus Lundin is an athletic director, because we can't accommodate all of our sports on our high school fields, there just are not enough, so he has to program sports on other fields, it's going back and forth, sometimes Gus would tell me it's not a problem, other times he would tell me when we were on the start time committee, it's a big problem, and I'm having a lot of trouble from Parks and Rec getting cooperation, so I'm sure... So I'm sure the overall tenor is cooperation between the two. But if we're going to be writing agreements, which is what these are, memorandums of understanding, I think we need to rebalance that and come to some new arrangement with Parks and Rec so that they have access to our fields to run their programs, and we have a more balanced access to their fields to run our programs. That's the, we want cooperation, but we don't want one side of that cooperation. In my mind, maybe the other board members feel differently. One side to have a little too much authority in that. Those are the two bits of feedback I'd give on this to you. Did you ask for it?
So one, I want to point out, there was money in the budget put in by the BET for Parks and Rec to conduct yet another field study. There were no conditions on that money that they work with the Board of Ed. I would hope that they will communicate and work with us, because the majority of the fields listed in here are our fields. And I echo Peter's sentiment. They shouldn't be coming up with plans for our fields without actually coming through us. I'm going to refer to what I call the secret agreement, the one that never came to the board. The one nice thing about it is it does have that charter of services provided. And I'm with Peter, I don't think everything's defined right. But I'll point out, it says surface drainage, Parks and Rec takes accountability for that. You know, we heard tonight about Central Middle Schools' fields. It is true. If there's a big rain, it's closed for days. Because Parks and Rec is not renting out that field, they are not clearing that surface drainage issue. What I would like to see, because that was your question to us, is take all of these agreements, roll it into one agreement that lays everything out, that basically spells from A to Z all the details, and cures the one thing that's really missing from here, which is a dispute resolution mechanism. What happens when we point out to Parks and Rec, hey, Central's got a drainage problem. On the chart, this is your responsibility, and they don't want to own it. So I'd really like to see that come back to us and work with Parks and Rec on getting that moved forward.
With the field study, I spoke with Joe about having representation on that, that study, and we will have representation on that.
Okay, Ms. Anil.
Is that, are we referring to the study that the BET gave them money for? Have they put out an RFP for that already?
I'm not sure, Barbara. I don't know if they put out an RFP.
We should definitely have, we should definitely have input into that RFP. Shouldn't go out without a, I agree with Peter. I think we need to be more upfront about assuming responsibility for our fields and not letting that be taken by others. And I would say that as we give priority to the Parks and Rec after we're through with them, then I think we should give priority on the town fields. And I think it should be stated that way.
Ms. Stowe.
I experience the fields every weekend as a coach, and I have to say I'm looking forward to trying Central this weekend, because we've been doing a lot at Cos Cob, and that field, yeah, needs a little help. But I guess, Ralph, you've been a coach, principal, superintendent. You probably have more perspective than anyone. What, and Dan, what do you guys think? What's working well, what's not?
Well, I think one of the things that works well is that we have a good relationship with Parks and Rec. Dan and Tim work really well together. I mean, that's the good news. Some of the things that are problematic with maintaining the fields, it has nothing to do with, it's what we use to use, we use to maintain the fields now. We used to be able to use different types of chemicals and stuff to maintain our fields. We can't use those anymore. So now we're using, you know, natural, you know, chemicals, not natural chemicals, but natural, organic materials to fertilize and weed our fields, and it just doesn't, you know, work the same. So nobody's fault, but it's just the reality of it. But if you look at our fields, our biggest problem is our number of fields in play right now. And I can tell you, when I started coaching, since you brought it up, back in 1976, by the time the spring season rolled around at Greenwich High School, we were practicing on dirt. So are we in better shape than we were? Yes, we are. But, you know, it's a process. And I agree wholeheartedly with Peter and Barbara that when we get stuck once in a while and we can't use a field, we're always bartering to make use of a field. And we should get a lot more cooperation from Parks and Rec than when we do. So yeah, that's something that, yeah, I would like to see in the MOU as well.
There's one thing I do want to point out, because this was said the other night at the RTM meeting. Basically, Parks and Rec has taken a huge cut in the number of heads that they've had over the years. All of the heads that they've lost are all the heads that the Board of Ed transferred over at the beginning of this relationship. And that shouldn't be lost on anyone at this table. Basically, it behooves us to support their use of their employees in a way that services our fields. But it really is something that I think has affected us probably a little more than other departments in town.
They lost, as you said, Peter, and I think I reported this out last time we talked about this, they lost a significant number of employees that were moved over from the Board of Education to Parks and Rec through the budget process.
Ms. Tate.
So instead of trying to fix existing problems, why don't we have a vision for the future and try to work together to acquire new land for new fields? Do you think that will be part of the Parks and Rec design study? To actually acquire new fields that the two of us can jointly manage?
It's hard for me to say, Jennifer, but I don't know where Joe's going with the RFP for the field study. So I, and I do intend to ensure that we are part of that process as well.
Ms. Stowe.
So I had one positive comment, is that I've actually had a great experience personally with the Parks and Rec department, and I have to say that they do, I feel personally that they make, since I do the Saturday morning calls, they do call the fields pretty quickly. And that's the unfortunate part, because it's, they get wet and damaged and cannot be used often. But I do feel like they don't push the needle, and so I just want to mention that.
Ms. Anil.
I just wonder if there's any way to monitor the rental of those fields to other organizations, whether there's a way of deciding whether they are overused so that the grass fields that we have do not have any time to recuperate? I don't know how you decide that, because that's not my area of expertise. But I do wonder if, could I sit as a rep of the board on the fields committee and the board of Parks and Rec? And it just seems that if a team comes along, and it seems like teams like the division, the subdivide, that they apply, and if they meet certain criteria, they get scheduled. And I think it's possibly without any thought to whether the field can withstand that amount of use. It just seems, do the teams seem to just keep multiplying?
Well, they have a process of limiting the number of teams that multiply. So they're not allowing splinter teams any longer. So that's one thing that they've been doing. But, you know, one of the things that you have to give Tim Coslin and Donald Moore for is they walk the fields. They walk the fields all the time. So they're really good at monitoring the fields. In the summertime, eastern is rarely used. I can speak to eastern, because I lived there for 14 years. But it's rarely used because they're re-turfing or they're working on that field. So they are, they're pretty good about taking care of our grass fields.
Do you feel like you have enough to go on and move forward?
Yeah, I think, I think we start with getting together with, I think, myself, Joe, Tim, and Dan, and that's, and we go from there. And discuss the issues that we brought up, and maybe bring in Ben Brandon.
All right, anything else on this? Thank you for your work on this, the board closing this out. All right, sorry about this. I had skipped the food services when I made a check mark. When we got through the budget priorities, I made a really big check mark, so food services.
Okay, I just wanted to point out for the audience's sake that the report that was printed this evening is missing the last page only because we had to add it very last minute. And it was a quick update on the test run of the stainless steel trays at the New Lab School this week. So I'm, okay, here's John. So I'm going to give him an opportunity to just kind of tell you how it's going, although we did hear earlier, we did receive a quick update. So I will pass it over to him, and then we can move on to the food services report.
Thanks. Yeah, we, at the last meeting, we reported that we were going to pilot the stainless steel trays at New Lebanon, which the new kitchen opened up with a mechanical dishwasher. So we purchased the trays. We rolled it out on Monday this week to help with Julie and her group doing the trash recycling area. So far, very well received by the kids, I think. The trays are manageable. Dishwasher is operating fine. We've been able to wash between waves and not necessarily have to add labor at the end of the day, which is something we were concerned about to begin with. So far, I think it's been a positive, very positive experience. And Lori and I were over there for lunch today, and got to see it in action, and very well. So I've been feeling good about that.
Are there any questions on the test run and tray?
How many trays do we have, and what's the capacity of the dishwasher?
We purchased 192 trays for New Lebanon School. New Lebanon generally runs anywhere between about 165 and probably 200 lunches on a Friday. So we thought, number one, we wanted to make sure we were covered so that we wouldn't necessarily have to wash any trays if it came down to that. The pile's giving us an opportunity to see that we may be able to pare down on future purchases, not necessarily inventory an entire full lunch, you know, service with that many trays. The capacity of the racks right now, we can fit 11 in there. But what we found out is it's nine going one way and two on the ends to make the 11. And that did inhibit some of the cleaning power of the dishwasher, where some racks have to be run twice. So we pulled out the two sides, and now we're down to nine, and that seems to be working well. So it's just one wash, it's, I think, it's about 2 minutes and 12 seconds per load, and that's it, pretty quick.
It's a lot faster than my efficiency, 112-minute dishwasher run. I guess I'm curious, though, if having the full number of trays might be necessary for the time the dishwasher isn't working, but that's just.
Correct, yeah.
And move on to that.
All right, so the Food Services Committee met and summarized some of the work that we've done to date. We've outlined what the Board of Education request was on the Food Services Committee. That's in your packet. And we went into some detail on each of those items to provide you with more information about what we've looked at. I'm happy to take any questions on the report.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sher.
Has your committee already reviewed all this?
The committee wrote this jointly, so the six of us, we stacked hands. We all stand behind the report. It's in big animal pictures so that everyone can understand it. And we're at a place where we've got proposals. So similar to the bleachers, we're looking for additional proposals for the delivery service as well as the consultancy. We did learn something about the Food Services Management Company. We were under the impression that we didn't have full kitchens in every school, but we do, so we can still investigate them as a solution. And the committee would really like to get the board's sense of the meeting. Are we prepared with the information that we have in getting those final bids for the different options, as well as what you learned about improving the quality of the food through a new menu choice? And John being able to price out the new menu choices for September, can we get a sense of the board that we've satisfied the questions that were asked back in February? Get the bids and try to pilot improvements in September?
Ms. Tate.
Full-throated support to move ahead with pilot. I have enough information here. I have trust in the team over here from the administration and the committee. I just would like to get this underway as soon as possible. Looks like you're looking at multiple vendors. That gives me comfort. I'm glad you're looking at two different approaches, consulting and delivery. I don't think you've left out anything else except the one problem of how do you handle the free and reduced lunch population? So if you'd like to comment on that, or Lori, if you want to comment on that? That's the last piece of the puzzle for me. Otherwise, I'd like to move forward.
So we did outline in, I think it's item three, two, rather, no. Is it two? It's two, that based on the financial analysis, which was also provided in your packet, there were recommendations for two schools where we would pilot the delivery service model? ISD and GLS. I'm sorry, ISD and Glenville School.
And then I'll answer, and it was due to, because the delivery service, there's no payment to them. So those were the schools that were most in the negative and had the fewest free and reduced lunch students. So the delivery service would absorb those. And what we want to do is for the schools that have a higher population of free and reduced, that's where, as we're learning about what could happen in a delivery service, what are we getting from the consultancy, and what are we getting from our own efforts of improving the menu at Hampton Avenue, for example, without raising the cost? Because we're still on the National School Lunch Program for those students.
So I guess my biggest question is about the delivery service is about the free and reduced lunch population. And I feel like I still don't have enough information on that. And I really think if we were going to pilot it, you'd want to pilot it at a school where you have that population, because we need to know what the effect of that is. And it's breakfast and lunch. I know you were all looking into, and I think it's great that you are, why those students aren't always taking the meals. I think a lot of those questions need to get answered. The other is, we need to figure out what that process is. I don't know that we've really discussed it about opting out for whatever school, where schools we test at from the National School Lunch Program. But I really do want to know what it's going to look like for the free and reduced lunch. So I'm not sure that these are the right mix of schools. I don't know what the reasons were for picking each one, other than what you just said. So I just want to hear more.
Well, just like at the high school, the free and reduced lunch kids are absorbed by the paying students, the P and L. So that's what we were looking at, was to absorb, because they're not going to pay the same price as the non-free and reduced lunch student at, like if we piloted at Glenville. But the delivery service.
I'm confused, because we get money from the government to help with that absorption. It's not all on the backs of students that are paying full fare.
That's, we're just trying to learn about how the food is served, what the intake is. It's, nobody envisions delivery service for the entire school system. That, the reason to go with the delivery service was to learn more about the types of recipes and meals that were nutrient-dense and that the students would eat. You're looking really confused.
I am really confused, because you just said that we weren't looking for something that we could use in the entire school district. And I think that sort of undercuts the point of actually using a third party to do this.
I said we weren't looking for delivery service to use in the entire school district. The pilots are to learn. That's why we're going to pilot.
I got that. I was just concerned you were saying that for the full program, once we move beyond a pilot.
Probably wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, we'd have to look at the financial model for it to be a delivery. for it to be a delivery service, it probably would be cost prohibitive.
Okay, that's very confusing. Mr. Scher.
This one's a hard problem, so I just wanna say thank you to you and your Committee for working on it, because it's, I see this thing as it's got a bunch of competing interests, and there's people, you know, who want certain things and they're vocal, nothing wrong with that, but ultimately it all has to be reconciled. So, you know, from speaker from Hamilton Avenue tonight, and this is Lauren where I'm stuck in this report and I can't figure it out, I'm in the same place I was back in, I think, when we talked about this February, is, I know there's a bunch of parents, particularly very active in the PTA and PTA Council, who want much better food served in the lunch program served by the school, right, because you can divide the population into kids who bring, right, and kids who don't. And then, of the kids who don't bring, who get, right, because they either buy, or it's given to them under a free and reduced lunch program, right, there's tension in that system, right? There's some people who will gladly and have the means to pay much more money per meal, and they won't do that, and they're naturally gonna come in and advocate for better quality food. I think what's hidden in that statement that we never get around to is, I think there's some folks in that camp who would expect the Board, well, why don't you just go ask the town of Greenwich for some more tax dollars to pay for it, right? And we never really talk about that issue, but setting that part aside, so of the people we're providing lunch for, either they're buying it, or they get it under the program, what I'm stuck on is, I don't know how those two tensions get resolved, because for free and reduced lunch, we get very little reimbursement, so if we make food more expensive, it's a direct cost, and we're gonna have to count for it in our budget somehow, right? But then there seems to be a set of people who gladly pay, I don't know, I forget the numbers when these people came, they'd start like six bucks, seven bucks, I wanna say it was seven bucks was the number, you know, and what I don't see here is, I realize you won't know the answer, but I don't see here any kind of modeling that says, if I assume this many people take this, this is what it winds up doing to the Food Services budget. If it's a de minimis ad, right, if it's, I don't know what de minimis is, and I think everybody here, I don't know anybody here who doesn't wanna serve better, more nutritious food, so we could take that one off the table, right? But I don't know what that winds up costing, so I, on a guess, Lori, not on a for sure, but at least a guess, so that if we wanted to go this route of 70 bucks a meal, whatever it is, and we wanna serve it to everybody and we wanna absorb all the cost, what does that look like? So I don't know what I'm looking at, so I don't know how those two things.
And we're not at that place yet, because we have, we're designing the right menu, and John's gonna be pricing out what that food is gonna cost.
Don't you need the outside people though to do that? Because the delivery of that could be, we do it ourselves, we hire somebody to do it, or we use this delivery service at No Fuss Lunch, right? Aren't there three, am I wrong, are there three options with which to achieve that servicing, those two groups of people who are gonna be paying or buying, not bringing?
There's two options, we either do it ourselves, or we pay somebody else to do it, whether it's a delivery service or a traditional food service management company. The consultant part is another option to help educate and how to run it in a way that's cost-effective, and they've been into districts that have high free and reduced lunch populations, so that was the Brigade, there's another company that we just found out about recently, we're gonna see what their pricing model is. So they're coming in and teaching districts how to create the food from scratch, the purveying of it, the serving of it, you know, the whole shooting match, so that's an option too, as, because that was the request of the Board, give us additional piloting options, not just a delivery service.
So my other question was, which was in here, which is related, was, there's this, like 56% of free and reduced lunch is bad, but it's kinda like embedded in that, like these kids are not eating something as a result, but what, do we know?
We don't know, and I know that Ralph, you mentioned that the principals are looking into it, so they might be bringing lunch, and that's, you know, fine.
That's okay, right?
Or they might not be aware, because remember, the guidelines, well, not the guidelines, you don't have to apply, you're eligible for it, so this is the percentage of people who are eligible, and they were notified, so it's, is it a case that they just don't know? Or is it a case that they don't want to eat the food? So we have to investigate that. You know, John did mention, it was in the paper, that for the three schools that have a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch students, that percentage in those buildings are higher. Also, if you're on free and reduced lunch, you, what you're entitled to is the meal, they might be purchasing à la carte, so they might be eating, but they might not be getting the meal that they're entitled to, they might be buying à la carte items, which they're not entitled to as a free or reduced lunch.
Is that a policy problem, or?
Ms. Wilson.
Sorry.
That's okay. À la carte is the most expensive.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you for, it is a big task, and Lori, thank you also, because I know that you're on pretty much everything, you know, like, so just echo, you know, your hard work also tonight, you've gotten a lot of shout-outs, but it's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of work. And first of all, that's exciting about New Lebanon, and I've never heard of a two-and-a-half minute dishwasher, and I wanna know where I can buy one, because I've never heard of that. Two-and-a-half minute, yeah, two-and-a-half minute dishwasher, yeah, that's amazing. Yeah, so also, I guess my question also, I'm sort of stuck on the, I also have the same concerns, I guess, that were mentioned, from Peter, first thing about the free and reduced lunch, it's just that if it is piloted in a school that has less, small population of free and reduced lunch, I think it's harder to predict how it's gonna play out, how it's gonna roll out, and I know that that's probably one of the, that is one of the criteria, but I just, I'd be nervous to make sure that we're, A, people that are, I know that the survey said a lot of people are willing to spend up to $3 more per meal, but I'd be worried that maybe not everyone vocalized that, or there's people that are kinda in-between that aren't quite willing to spend that much, so I kinda see the sort of struggle that Peter Scher was mentioning, the differing voices. I'm all in, I mean, this whole country's addicted to sugar, I'm one of them, like, you know, we eat too much sugar, too much fat, I'm like, I think that everyone up here is all for the healthier meals, and so I, I think that we're all, we all would want that, we're all excited about the dishwashers, we all, you know, already made a point of, and basically a deadline for doing away with start from trays, like, I think we all want what's best for the students, absolutely, and it is the mind-body connection, like, I believe all of this, I've read the studies, you know, the childhood, you know, mood, depression, all of that, I think it's food, it's also, there's a lot of stuff, it's cyberbullying, it's screen-hum, there's a lot of things that go into that, it's over-testing, and there's a lot of stuff, it's not just the food, but it does play a role, their diet, so I'm all for that part of it, I just, I still feel like there's some kinks to work out, that's...
Ms. Dow.
So my heart, of course, literally my heart, wants to improve the food that we're offering our children, obviously, we all have children in the schools, it's very important, however, we have to be the adults in the room, and I have to understand the financials, like, to its core, before I put at risk the reduced lunch population, and I, I'm just not getting that, and I, and I needed to come from Lori, I needed to come from our administration that then tells me, in September, this is in our budget, and it's no problem, we've got it covered, or it's going to cost us $100,000 more, whatever it is. Look, we spent over $1 million on start time, that's a conscious decision that the prior Board made, fine, but then tell me what the number is, and I can then make a pragmatic decision.
Lori, why don't you respond?
Thank you, so yes, and that is the work that we plan on doing, is over the summer, we also have the Menu Planning Subcommittee working on, helping us with the food guidelines, and then, of course, we're gonna be working over the next couple of weeks on actually looking at some menu items, sample menu items, and looking to figure out how we can sort of reformulate menus. But at the same time, we're actually also getting ready to go out to bid, so with those guidelines, you know, we'll have a whole series of, you know, new types of food that we're gonna get pricing on, so over the summer we'll be able to do that analysis, and then, and bring that to you. We have to look at other options as well, right? So we do know that to some extent the food costs may go up, we're exploring with the Subcommittee ways to kind of offset it, if you will. It's not that it's at the forefront, but we always have to be cognizant of that financial cost, so we're trying to figure out how to do that, you know, is it fewer menu options? You know, we've already started testing that, is it, you know, less expensive products that we're using? If we're looking to do this plant-forward, you know, continuum, then maybe that will be less expensive than, you know, more of the meat options that we're serving, so we are exploring all of this, we have to bring it all together, look at the costs over the summer and see what that kind of impact will be, but of course, we're gonna try to offset it as much as we can.
Okay, Tom.
To say that the thought about using a delivery service was to learn about serving, how to serve, the types of menu choices, what kids will eat, because someone kept saying, yeah, we're giving them fruits and vegetables, they're not eating it, so is it the way it's served, is it the combination of stuff? So it wasn't, I know, and I care about the free and reduced lunch kids just as much as anybody else, I actually was a free and reduced lunch kid, so I totally get it, it was to learn about the food, not to discriminate and make delivery service what we did as a district, we wanna be self-operating.
Dr. Francis.
So I think that might answer the question I had, I mean, when we first started talking about No Fuss Lunch or a delivery service, my impression was that we were gonna pilot it as something we're gonna consider for the whole district, that eventually we would be changing that, and that's one of the reasons we had so many questions about the free and reduced, and in particular, you know, the sense that we can't have something different at one school long-term from another, right? So we couldn't say, okay, these three schools can afford No Fuss Lunch, but we're, you know, not gonna do it at this other school. So are we now saying that the No Fuss Lunch is not really what we're considering long-term, even for these sort of a, here, let's gather some information while they try it out? And they're fine with that, to basically say, we're gonna take you for four months, and then there's no way we're gonna be keeping you?
We have a proposal for a year, it's a proposal for a year.
Mr. Scher.
That's the beauty of business, businesses actually take risk when they try to get business, so presumably No Fuss Lunch, I hope we're not taking that on, it has to be on them and a risk in their business that they think this will be successful and that they could compete successfully for a business in the future.
And I mentioned they're going into a private school, so they're already, you know, coming to Greenwich.
I keep hearing that, Lauren, which school are they going into? Because everybody keeps saying they're going into a school.
Are they ready to disclose that?
It seems like some people know, so if we're gonna keep saying it, let's know what school it is.
My, my, my point back to Lori was, I just wanted to be sure, and I, by the way, I agree, we, this has gotta be same district-wide, we can't, I'm gonna, yeah, whenever we decide what we're doing for changing, right? Because contrary to, you know, whether you believe it ethically and morally, which I do, is you need to have equity in education, it's state law anyway, so as a Board, we can't, we have to do it, so that's the way it is. My question was though, was just the sequencing here, we're developing a menu or some kind of RFP, that's represented in an RFP spec, right? And then that, that's what we're using to do the bidding? We're not doing the bidding and then following up with the spec afterwards, right? No, it's gotta be against a common specification, otherwise it's not a fair bidding. I heard you talk about the menu and developing it, but it sounded like you were doing that at the same time you were talking about RFPs, I just.
Sorry, I was referring to doing, to our annual process of going out to bid for our food.
Okay.
For actual.
Because here's the thing, here's the thing, and John, I gotta give John and his team a lot of credit, I mean, I know his staff feels like they're being beat up by this conversation, which isn't cool, but John's done a great job, I mean, for those of you who weren't on the Board, this thing was a gaping financial hole, it took a couple of years to dig out of that gaping financial hole, and these people deserve the credit for that. The only point I'm making, maybe the Board feels differently, I guess I'm maybe oversensitive to that, I don't wanna go redig the hole we just filled in, so we just need to be really thoughtful, and, you know, this is really important, and I agree with, you know, Megan, what you were saying, I think food does affect mental health, I think this is all connected, but academics, it's all connected, you know, and you can't say in your strategic plan that you're focused on health and well-being if you're not focusing on this, but at the same time, I hate to be the cold water, we need to go next year, we need to fund, we need to refund teacher training, there were some horrible, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul decisions made in this budget that we're about to embark on, so just a reminder, folks, we can't, we have to be really careful on managing the wish list here. This one, I think, is important for me, it's important, so if someone came to me and made a trade-off, one or the other, I think this one would be important for me, but just a healthy reminder, this isn't gonna be an easy, it's not gonna be an easier budget next time we roll around either.
Any other discussion on this? Dr. Francis.
So I know there's been a question about, you know, trying to get more specifics in terms of numbers, and I think there's been some desire to have a plan, you know, where we're committing to doing something for September, but, you know, if we're gonna get a bunch of information over the summer, is that something where in the fall we could say, okay, now we've decided we wanna start these pilots for January, once we have more information? I mean, is there some reason it needs to be at the start of the whole year?
Yeah, I'm not, um... Right, so your question is whether or not, what happens if we can't start for September, September 1, basically? I don't know that we've actually...
Yeah, we haven't considered it, because we've been at this since February, and we have the proposals, and we're not trying to come with cost to the piloting, this is a pilot, this isn't, this isn't revamping and going to a whole new Food Services, this is trying a couple of things to learn so that we can do better moving forward.
So are you satisfied with that in terms of understanding the costs of what we're looking at?
I guess so long as we're not committing to doing this long-term, because I just would hate for people to all of a sudden get comfortable with something that we might have to say no to next year.
If we did this thing and all of a sudden it went financially pear-shaped, I would be able to turn off the spigot, you know, and fall back. If it, I hope that isn't the case, I hope, these pilots are the coolest thing since ever, and we learn all kinds of great stuff, and kids are eating much healthier feel food, awesome, you know, but I would just wanna have an escape valve that if this thing, however you set up the pilots, Lauren, and you have a Committee, you guys are smart enough to do it, I would just hope you would figure out a way, consider limiting any downside risk, but I, me personally, I, great, anything you can do to help make the pilots happen, let me know.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our next item, it's a policy first read, Dr. Francis.
So policy first reads, I don't think there was anything in particular that we felt was particularly an issue in this one, I do believe this is the one where I did just point out that one of these policies is not the CADE policy, right, is this the one with the 504? I think so, yeah. What we did is, we already had in District a legally reviewed, fully vetted system that we were using, at the high school for sure, and I think in the District, and there was a portion that was the policy and one that was the procedure, and so what we... And so what we did instead was take that and make very minor, you know, modifications to take out people's personal names or whatever to do that. Thirty-five eleven.
Okay, Mr. Scher.
Mr. Rivers, do you have a couple of these? Do you want me to just roll, or do you want me to do one, and then I'll come back? What do you want me to do?
We'll see if anybody else has any comments on that one, and then we'll move on to the next one.
Mine is, I'm going to jump around, Gaetan. Mine is on periodic audits. Thirty-four, thirty-four. Since we have a budget committee of the board, or the full board, I think probably, most of the full board wants it, I think you should have a policy that the audits are reviewed by the budget committee. So there's, that's what happens in the rest of the world. You know, you have a board, there's an audit committee, and they come in and say, here's what was found in the audit, so that it's flagged. I would hope you would add that as there would be a review item in the board. Let me go to the next one.
Anybody else have, Dr. Francis, do you have what you need on that?
I'm sorry, you're saying, that it be reviewed by the board?
No, it has to be, they have to present the findings of the audit to the budget committee. Then the budget committee, because we have one, they can then, they can then say, hey, by the way, here's issues, I would flag them to the board. They're effectively our representatives.
So I think, I think we talked to Lori about this in terms of the information coming back, and it was a little unclear, if I recall.
This is where we went through the whole thing. Is it an independent audit? No, it's the town that audits it, so they...
No, this is the annual audit.
I'm sorry, this is the, and then it's the, and you and Ralph meet with the auditor yes, and then...
No, it's done by the town.
No, 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 they have this independent, we went through this whole thing. They do in fact have this independent auditor that's apparently beyond the town. Go ahead, Lori.
Yes, yes, so the town conducts an audit by an independent party, and we are a part of that audit.
We're a part.
No, we're not a department.
We're a part of the audit.
But do we get, do we get feedback from that?
Yes.
Yes. And it goes to you?
It's part of their public report.
And so Peter, you're asking that it somehow be presented or reviewed by our budget committee?
But not signed, just reviewed.
Oh, no, I'm not into signing, no. There isn't, no, I'm not trying to make this like a full-on corporate board. What I'm just suggesting is, is we have a budget committee of the board, it's responsible for finances on behalf of the board. So what should happen is the audit, auditor, should, when there's audit findings, should come in and report those out to the budget committee of the board. That it's the responsibility of the chairman of the budget committee of the board to decide if something is in that that needs to be highlighted to the full board, at which point they would talk to the chairman and say, I think you need to put this on the agenda. That's what the policy should say.
So I think there was one discussion that we had about this, which was, we don't actually control this in any way, so can we require them to come present to us? But if it's published, then I guess we should look at it.
This is such, this is such a basic governance thing, that this isn't even like, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is, you go look up any board on the planet, and this is what they have.
Right, but I guess the question was, we don't control the audit in any way, because it's something independent, but if they will do it...
But we're responsible for what our, what are...
Okay. Okay, can we stop this side conversation? Ms. O'Neil.
So I agree with Mr. Scher. It's a minor point. We're responsible for the budget, and so we should know if there's any concerns that come up through the audit. The policy is, it states now, it's presented, the superintendent shall report, but doesn't say to whom on any concerns or whatever. So I don't see any reason why it can't be presented to the budget committee, who then, if there's concerns, would then present it to the board. I don't, I don't see it as an issue. The audit, we're responsible for the budget, so therefore, we should know about the audit.
Anybody else on this one? All right, Mr. Scher, you want to go to your next one?
My next one, my next one was thirty-five eleven. Yeah, it relates to 504. I'd like to see in support of the people who have to administer this program, that it's a matter of policy, that we say, you could do this in the regulations, but I'd like it to be in policy, that there's training given to, a training given to every teacher in the district on how to properly comply and administer 504 plans. We do a great job on, and there's great consistency on IEPs. We need to support particularly, I wish you were still here, Carly, Judy, I know she's out in the hall, you know, these people who work really hard to administer these things that take up a lot of time by the administrators, and I think we need to make it as a matter of board policy, that there has to be regular training and regular updated training given to particularly our teachers, because they're frontline on this every day.
Anybody else on that one? Dr. Francis.
I was looking for administrative response to that. I mean, I don't know what that entails. I don't know if that's a budget item that would be a big increase. So we're looking at the policy that you so kindly sent us, the 504, and the question is adding a line here that says, it's part of the policy to train all teachers on how to properly apply the 504 plans.
Pete, what I was saying is, is it's, I know in the case of the high school unit discussed this, that teacher, teachers are trained and, right? But at the same time, I think the observation I made, shared with the board, was that we're, we're really good at IEPs. 504 has got a little bit more ambiguity to it, so in support of you and your staff, I'm saying the board should make this a matter of policy, that we support you with, and the teachers who have to administer these plans, particularly your staff, because I've talked to your staff, and I know they do a great job trying to explain to teachers what their obligations are. The thought was, is to add more support to that by making it a board policy that part of our professional development is used to train people on administering IEPs and 504s. That was what, that was what I was proposing.
And I do think IEPs and 504s would be appropriately grouped together for training for faculty, because the, you know, what to look for, you know, red flags and things like that, as well as what, you know, accommodations and, you know, might be used in the classroom would be the same for both. And it's part of the new teacher training.
We actually did a couple of sessions this past year on accommodations and qualifications.
That's true. During professional learning time, and we each gave a presentation during the faculty meeting at the high school, and I did get permission to, you know, every few years anyway, we should work with an attorney to relook at all of our processes and things like that, especially for section 504, so that's a goal this summer.
Anybody else? Next one? Anybody else? No? I'm a little concerned about the vagueness of the language. Thirty-five fifteen, facilities use. I'm not opposed to the concept. The language is exceptionally subjective. So it says restrictions on school-use facilities. It says number five, inappropriate advertising shall not be allowed. I have no idea what inappropriate advertising is. The other one that could get us in a world hurt is the next one, and I obviously don't, I don't want any prejudice or whatever, but activities that engender racial or religious prejudices or which are inimical, wow, that's an SAT word I forgot, to, I wonder if I got that on the SAT, to democracy are prohibited. That's like, so subjective. I, I like the idea, I don't oppose the concept, but this, this sounds like a policy that could invite a lot of trouble.
This is equally broad, but I'm wondering if you could just say something that, you know, the behavior within these activities needs to meet the standards of all of our policies and behaviors.
Something like that. I just don't, I, I mean, this will never, I shouldn't say never, it could happen, right? There was a big kerfuffle this year about something that somebody wanted to do at town hall, and thank God our first selectmen stood up for free speech, but, you know, I just, I just don't want us to get, this seems to be...
Anything about my proposal is a...
Let's not do that.
Do something that's sort of a general, you've got to meet all of our policies in terms of your actions.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else on that one? Get her any others? Ms. O'Neil.
I'd like to look at three-five-one-four, authorized use of school equipment. This policy, actually, I was part of the discussion of this, and now I'm inside and looking at it. It's very broad, there's no restrictions on it, to whom we are going to let our school equipment be used by, or user fees if applicable, who sets the user fees. It just seems to me that we might want to take another look at this, and we might also want to take, send it to legal in terms of our own liability. It talks about insurance, do we, are we indicating that's the town insurance that's required? I just think this needs a real flushing out. I'm a little concerned also about the use of computers as well. So I would like to see the policy committee take another look at this, and then maybe send it to legal, so that we're not leaving ourselves open in terms of, you know, letting people use our school equipment. I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure that we're protected.
Any other comments on that one? Mr. Scher.
Maybe Gaetan, you can answer this. I read, maybe I read this wrong, based upon what Ms. O'Neil said. I think what it says is, is that if you come into our buildings, and you're permitted to use equipment, but you have to do equipment, you can't just say, I suppose you could take something out, like computers, but then I guess that says you can't use a smart board, you can't, I don't know what, I could imagine this like gets overly prescriptive. But I read this as, you can come into our buildings, you can rent our buildings, you can, you have to cover all the costs. That's what the policy says, right? That, right? It says cover actual cost depreciation and insurance, right? That's kind of, so whatever the cost to use, we're never going to be out a dime, is what that says, which is the user fee point. And we can say, you can't use certain equipment, so the superintendent can say, no, you can't use our computers, right? If he so chooses, or she so chose. And you, it also says the person has to, if there's any damage, they're on the hook for all of it. What did I miss? Did I miss something? Yeah? What, what? I heard everything you said, I agree with everything you said, I just wasn't sure what I missed, and maybe I misread the policy.
Well, I think the fees, it doesn't say who sets them, it doesn't, I'd like it to say specifically that it's going to meet the requirements of the town insurance requirements. It could just sort of says insurance. The thing that it doesn't say, that you just said, in my mind, the way I read this, it doesn't say that this equipment will be used within the school. No way. It say, you may, you may use school equipment, but it doesn't say that it needs to be within the school, that it can't be removed from school property.
It says that for the second part.
It says it for the second part, because there was an incident, and that's why that's there. But I think it behooves us to say, it needs to stay within the school building. I also, well, there's things from the facilities one, that we should look at some of the criteria there and put it into the school equipment one.
Okay, so that's going to go back to PGC.
Well, and the other thing is, I guess I want to be sure I'm right on this. This is the policy. They ultimately have to go translate this thing into full guidelines, which is like detailed, here's exactly, right? I mean...
Right. The trouble with regulation, whatever, and policy, is that policy you have to do, regulations can be changed with or without notice.
Fair enough. Okay. Any others? Mr. Mann, did you want, nope. Okay, any others? Okay, Dr. Francis, you have it, me. All right, very good. We'll hear back from PGC at our next regular scheduled business meeting. Thank you. All right, so last but not least, is the wellness report that was moved here by Ms. O'Neil, so, Ms. O'Neil, I don't know.
So my apologies for keeping everybody so late, but I think this is an important proposal that you put forward. I think it has some interesting aspects to it, but since it's turning out to be a new toy gun, even though you're reusing or reconfiguring your staff, it is a new program and should be discussed. So I, I was wondering, who are the students that are going to be ser... I feel like I'm, you know, a firing squad now.
We're trying, we're trying against that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait a minute, I'll get my shield. So who are the students being served? If these are students who already have serious academic, behavioral, and social emotional issues, are these best students that students already identified?
So it's a combination of students. It's currently the students in the comprehensive support program, currently students receiving services from Effective School Solutions, ESS, and our STARS program, which is a tier-two intervention that we have for regular ed students, so it's a combination of kids with both IEPs and regular ed students.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Katie.
Any student.
Any student, but those currently is where we're starting.
I'm thinking a lot more, but listen.
I was fortunate to attend an absolutely fascinating talk by the leader of the Child Guidance Center today, and he is on the forefront of this kind of delivery model, which is to move away from the highly-trained, multiple-degree kind of professional mental health providers, and train people with a bachelor's degree, train people so that you distribute the numbers of people in an organization that can handle mental health issues. I strongly, strongly recommend that you connect with him to help shape this. I think that that is a shining example of a Greenwich nonprofit in your area of expertise. I also wanted to say that if we make this wellness center a place where students feel welcome that aren't in designated programs, will that become too much of a burden for the identified staff? Do you need to confine it to those in ESS, CSP, and STARS?
So if you look at the three-year plan, we will begin, starting with those particular students. Our goal is, three years out, is to have it a center for whoever needs it, drop-in. I want to go back to your, Child Guidance would be a wonderful agency. We work, as you know, with the inter-agency committee that we started five years ago. We have wonderful agencies that we've been involved with, and we have the Alliance, who's been supportive with the grant, so we are working with a lot of town agencies already, and I already have MIMIC set up with additional agencies, so I am absolutely looking forward to working with Child Guidance as well. But what we want to do is start with that group of kids, because they need their programming. Our goal is to expand it and have it a real center for all kids who need it. That's what the goal really is, but that's down the road. That is not the first year.
I have two, two concerns. I have two, two concerns. One, one is more of a, I want to support this. And I strongly support it. Judy knows what I'm probably about to say. My, my concern is, is that we, we have a lot of resources already. I, I have, you know, fortunately I had Ralph Mayo as a principal when, in my family, my son, severe concussion, became chronic illness. Chronic illness leads to, in his case, led to mental health problems. It's a natural progression, it turns out. And fortunately, not a lot of support. One of the things I observed, though, was, you know, we rely on, like in high school, in-house psychologists, right? And I realize this is going to play some kind of coordinating role, I guess, is what you guys are envisioning. But I, I really want to see how this thing works together. I don't want to see, and I think, I think we have to focus, there are kids who are getting lots of support. So you rattled off STARS and all the rest of it. No offense, those kids are like, they cut people on them like a laser beam. I thought this was, be something that might try to provide support and scoop up kids who are maybe a little bit outside that, the bullseye, you know? Because there are kids that were outside our bullseye who are, who are challenged. And my kid's got a lot of support, but I, and, and that's the first part. And the second part is, I kind of want to know where this goes. I love Greenwich Alliance, but these things, these grants, before we know it, they're like, you know, they're, they're backdoor, they're backdooring program commitments on behalf of the board. Because the next thing that happens is it's there, it's a program. And then there's an expectation that we're going to now have to bake it into a budget. I'm okay with that. If there was one thing I would spend money on, it would be mental health. But I think we got to get a full picture of where does this go? And I, you know, nothing to take away from the Alliance. Their job is to do seed projects. I get that part. So thank you to them for doing it. But at the same time, we have to then pick it up. If we think it works, we got to like pick it up and before you know it, it becomes a budget issue. So I'm, I'm interested in how this is all going to work.
Okay, so I want to address your first point. We agree with you that there are many kids out there that we're missing. I deal with the anonymous alerts. I deal with hospitalizations on a regular basis. I deal with risk assessments on a regular basis. You could see the data. This is where it came from. This wasn't just made up. This is, we have kids suffering, and these are kids who are out there that we're missing, quite frankly. And this program and this, this center really would help those kids. We're starting with a small group of kids because they are who we have right now. We want to, we want to expand. That is the goal. We wouldn't be doing this if we know we didn't have a need, and we have a need. And we want to make services more efficient and more effective and not more costly. I mean, that is, that is another part of the goal. The Alliance grant has really going to help us with the planning. We're not asking for additional staff. We, we're doing it with the staff we currently have, and hopefully we will see what, what happens. So we're reallocating our staff to complete this. So I understand what you're saying in terms of the grant, and we appreciate it because it is a seed money to get us going, to get training, to get, you know, consulting, to do everything we need to do to start it. But we are doing this with our current staff. We're reallocating staff.
That's your plan?
That's our plan.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. O'Neill.
So with the reallocation of staff, you're also having a physical place for this center. So if you're, what kind of staff are you reallocating? Your psychologists, your guidance counselors?
Yes, so we're taking.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We're taking physically year one, our plan is to move all the different pockets of service that we have, so ESS, STARS, CSP, and some of the other supports, and putting them in D-Wing, okay? So that everyone can be together. Because currently, one of the things that happens is we have tons of wonderful things happening for students, but they're in pockets around the building. And there's almost, as much as everyone tries, a lack of one person kind of being the case manager for that particular student, for whatever it is that student is going through, whether it's a three-week hospitalization and they need to come back, and who's getting their work, and how are we supporting them with mental health and everything. So one of the things we'd like to do is pull, not all the house-based school psychologists and whatnot will stay in the houses. We're physically going to move ESS into D-Wing with what will formally be CSP, but that would be rebranded into something under the Education and Wellness Center, into one place where every student will have a specific case manager, regardless of the fact of their special ed, 504, gen ed, everyone will have a case manager. I think our ultimate goal is that all services, all students get supported in whatever manner they require at that point in time. Because I feel we do a phenomenal job of caring for our students, but I feel like every time I go to a different house, we're having a similar conversation. So the student has work to make up because of a three-week hospitalization. Let's put a plan together. We want to have a place where that plan already exists and it's easy for students to access. And they have an opportunity to come back to school and feel comfortable getting their work done and re-acclimating back to the school after what could be a traumatic experience for them. So that's kind of one of the things that we're going to do.
So I want to say, I think this is great and it's moving in the right direction. This first came up to my recollection when we were talking about the budget and there was an ask to do this. And we basically said, we wish we could, but there's no money. I think I said at the time, if you can find a way to do this with that additional funding.
And we did.
And, and I'm glad you're doing it. Barbara, you can disagree, but I have them. Yeah, they have me on film saying that. I, I did say that because I, I really.
I didn't say you did say that.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. I think I'm going to keep going. Thank you, though. Yeah, I know, a little off course now. I think this is great. I actually want to see development like this. I don't want another 200-page report on something. I don't want you spinning your wheels. I actually want to see us providing services to students better, faster, in a way that they need it. And I think this is a good model for that. And my colleagues, some of my colleagues might disagree. Ms. Olson.
I heard some positive stuff to say thank you. I, I, that was really well articulated. And you found a creative way to, you know, it's a big school, and I, you know, you're in this obviously because you care, and you found a way to, to really find the students that might be, or, you know, or finding a way to find the students, like, so that you can bring them, you know, all those houses to make it up, make it a smaller school, but to be able to, to bring, bring people together and really seek out individual students. And I, I just commend, you know, what you're doing.
Ms. Dayton.
The other reason I fully support this innovative proposal is because way back when, if you remember, we had a committee called Safe Schools. Well, it doesn't just serve the individual student, it serves the security of all students in the building to deal with these mental health issues that are not going to be solved by a couple of visits to see their guidance counselor. This is a long-term tracking of at-risk students, and I commend you for that. That's something that we've been looking for, for a decade. So thank you so much.
I guess this is a question for the three of you. Oh, Mary, sorry, Mary too. How are you going to measure the success of this? Because, you know, to, to my point earlier, I, I could, it seems to me, one vector is just kids that are drawing services that don't already have them because of IEP or 504. But then the other vector is, is the one's the quantity vector, the other one is the quality vector, which is what's the efficacy of the services we're providing, however that's measured? Kids higher the graduation rates, they graduate on time, I don't know what it is. How, how are you guys going to measure that?
So if you go, if you go to.
I saw a bunch of them, but I wasn't sure those were actually how to be measured.
Sure. There's pre and post surveys using Ohio Rating Scale. We're using 90% of services will be accessible in one designated location. Each of the kids will have a dedicated case manager. We want 100% participation by parent. Another big piece of this is education of parents. So our goal really is, and this is critical in our opinion, that we will be doing specific training for parents at night if we have to, whenever's available to them, to train them and help them deal with some issues in terms of mental health and social emotional skills. I also mentioned here, which I think is really critical, baseline for attendance, different baseline for grades, and also one thing that I think is critical for data, and I know you brought this up before, is something we call a program status report. So we develop a report, and this is in year two. We develop the report of what is the optimal, what we want optimally for this program. And each month, we as a team figure out what we're doing. We assess ourselves, and we pick one area that we want to increase on each month. And at the end of the year, you're going to come up with a graph showing where we increased in each of these areas. So I absolutely agree with you with data. So there's multiple ways we're taking data to see what's working and what's not.
I, I've learned, this would be my comment. I've learned that this is mental health, unfortunately, it's like a total black, black art. But I would love to see if you guys could think about this, or maybe, I don't know if anybody else agrees with me. Those are a lot of input measures, right? I'd love to see if, as you go along, there might be more measures of student, you know, impact to student, right? I know all this is in service of kids, and there's an assumption it'll have an impact, but I think we need to measure impact to the, as I said, it's a black art, it's hard.
It's hard, but.
If you guys could think more about that as a measurement, that would be, because whenever you came back and said, how's this going? I would, that would be my immediate question, but it would be the question that kind of my colleagues too. All right, Ms. O'Neill.
So one of the reasons I recall that we turned this down originally was because we wanted an assessment of all the other splinter programs that you have. So I'm hoping as part of this program that you will look at all these other programs and say, is this the best way to be using the manpower we have? So that you have a more comprehensive program and not trying to keep a whole lot of pieces. Also, the parent part of this is, is really important, and I'm wondering if you're going to have to do something about adjusting the school day for some people.
Yes.
So that's something that will probably come up, and I don't expect you to answer that. The things that I was reading about the Effective School Solutions thing, one of the goals of that is to reduce out-of-school placements, out-of-district placements. Is that one of the goals of the program? I didn't see it mentioned.
Yeah, one of the goals of this program in particular is truancy. We're looking at truancy. We have kids who don't come to school. And that's one of the things that Effective School Solution does work on and does look at, is the truancy data. I'm, I'm not sure about the out-of-school, but definitely truancy data.
I mean, I, I think what happens is we focus on one aspect of what's happening with a student. So a student stops coming to school, for whatever reason that might be. If we can't get in there and really work with that student and that family about what are the underlying issues, and how do we help remediate that and get that child to school, and get feeling better about himself or herself, and get their grades in, that could lead to an out-of-district placement. So what we're trying to do is get much more proactive in what we're doing so that the, hopefully, the outcome will be decreased out-of-district placements.
I mean, I just want to finish up on that. The Effective School Solutions talks very much about the importance of the case manager and so on. It seems to me, from what I read, is that they have a person in place in the system. So is this someone, is this the consultant that you want to hire for the year? And then how do you, what do you do after that year?
So each ESS clinical social worker is part of the program, has students on their caseload, if, if that's what you're talking about. We want to have kind of a similar model in the, in the center by having every student have some kind of a case manager. So I'm not sure if that's what you're.
Well, I'm just, I was just thinking about the expense going forward, because I, I don't see this thing the way it is. I see this as growing and requiring funding and staffing and whatever. And that's what I think you need to project somewhat to the board about what the future expense of this program will be.
Ms. Olson.
Just back to what you mentioned, like truancy, and just to think about, it's not, not looking for an answer, also it's something just to put out there. Being experts in social emotional learning, you know, students that are cutting classes or truant or school avoidant, when they do show up, we generally give them suspension. So someone, wait, wait, in-school suspension or something for a certain number. I mean, I know it's a policy thing more, but we have just something to put out there. Like we, that's how we treat often students that are showing up. When they do show up, a lot of times it's like, okay, so, so that's just.
Can I just comment on that, though? However, we have changed that at the high school. We don't suspend for not coming to school. It makes absolutely no sense. So we don't do that. You don't get suspended for not going to class. You don't get suspended for not coming to school. That kind of defeats the whole purpose. It, it doesn't matter. I mean, suspension, suspension, in or out. So we have worked very hard over the last eight years to change that. We're not 100%, but we have worked very hard to change that because exactly what you said, makes no sense. They're out more than, they're out of class more. So this is hopefully, as, as Carlene said, a proactive approach to understand the reasons why they're not coming to school, to understand how we could get in there and help those kids and those families. Because this is not going to work without family support. We've learned that.
And I would just echo what Mr. Scher said earlier. This, like, your training needs to be trained to others so that they can.
Agree.
They can understand that too.
And part of this is also having the clinicians and the staff from this center go out into the regular ed classes. Because I think it's critical, just like you said, with the 504s, everybody needs, they're on the front lines. Because our goal is not to keep these kids with us, it's to get them out there and be the best that they can be.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Mary? You want to?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Termini and Ms. Wood for presenting tonight. One of the things that I find amazing about Greenwich High School is how much our staff cares for our students. And I tell you, Lorraine's a 24/7 person. She's kept this district safe more times than we can count, so she deserves a lot of credit. And it shouldn't fall on the shoulders of one person. It should be, it should be this program that will serve those students, not just Lorraine Termini. And thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on to our action items. So the first item is the GHS Course of Study Guide for 2019-2020. So I'll move that we accept the Course of Study Guide. Is there a second? Ms. Dayton, discussion? Just a level set. This is the document that contains the final version of the edits that were discussed in previous meetings. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting the Course of Study Guide? Passes eight zero. Ricky can take a nap now.
One thing that is going to make a difference.
Not yet.
Good job, Dana.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our action items is the GHS textbook proposal for honors physics. Is there a vote to accept that?
I move to accept the proposal for the new honors physics textbook.
Is there a second? Ms. Stowe. All right. Any discussion on physics? No? Did y'all check it out, do your homework? All right. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting the physics textbook on this one? All right. Passes eight zero. Thank you. Next up is the GHS textbook proposal for German.
I make a, I move that we accept the GHS textbook proposal for German.
All right. And a second from Dr. Francis. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the German textbook? Passes eight zero. Thank you. Next up is the healthy food certification. So.
I move that we accept the healthy, uh, healthy food certification as presented by Ms. O'Donnell and Mr. Hopper.
Is there a second? Second from Ms. Dayton. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the healthy food certification? Passes eight zero. Thank you. All right. Next up are the policies. So.
I move that we, we accept.
Actually, I want to move this. Hey, why don't you let Dr. Francis take this from us?
Yeah, okay. Yes. Committee, from a committee chair.
I move that we accept the policies for second read with the elimination of 3160 from the prior list. Sorry, hold on. 3152.
Is there a second? Ms. Stowe, just for the sake of our record, which one was 3152?
1152 is the one on referenda, which we went back and looked at and felt like there was just so much of it that was not applicable, that it was not reasonably changeable, that we should just remove it. we should just remove it.
Okay, I actually had some questions on the, I can't remember the name of the-
3160, you have a question on?
Yes, 3160, which related to budget transfers. And I felt like that probably needed some more discussion, so I don't know if you talked about that at AGC or not.
Well, we did, but-
We did. We, well, I think it was just Kaitlin and Lori. And we thought that it was being, basically, we're now in lines, in line with the standards that the BET asks for. Am I wrong about that, Lori? The 10,000 minimum for the transfers is basically the same requirement as the BET. And so we were just trying to align with that. But I think, Peter, you have raised that you wanted it to be lower threshold.
Yeah, I think we have a responsibility under state law, we have the ability to move items within our operating budget. And I really do believe that we should do a better job of watching those transfers. When we get to the transfers tonight, I'm going to object, I'm not voting for it. I really think we need to do a better job of paying attention to those. I think the threshold for reporting to the board ought to be lower. I know the BET is set at 10,000, that's great for the BET. I think what the board is seeing, though, is a different matter. And I'd like to be a little bit more granular. These transfers are happening, and they're coming to us after the fact. And I'm not really comfortable with that process, given what I'm starting to see here as a pattern, so.
My, sorry, just to respond to that, I kind of feel that on a $163 million budget, that takes a lot of 10,000 to get interesting, but 0.007%. But I am willing to-
I think the other issue that, I think the other issue that we've talked about was sort of the balance of the effort of having two different systems. And that, you know, what we're unhappy about is the fact that, that, you know, the budgeting didn't match what we're doing. But I don't think that in these occasions, we would have done anything differently than what happened, in terms of the actual transfers. So we're creating a lot more work for our financial person, without it necessarily having any impact on how we're going to function.
Mr. Scher.
I'm not worried about the 10,000 versus 5,000, or whatever. We need to keep, I would hope we would keep our eye on the ball. This is not a policy problem, this is an operational problem. We should not be seeing this level of transfers. There is absolutely a problem in budgeting and budget, long-term budget planning, that is why we're seeing these numbers of transfers. I'm going to give, I guess I'll give Lori the benefit of the doubt, I'm really unhappy about it, I think I've said it before, I'm sorry, say that so late. But I'll say, okay, fine, the first budget, she was new. This next budget, she owns. So if our CFO is, we're going to keep having this, then we need to revisit this policy. If this next year, we don't have this level of budget transfers, then it was properly handled operationally, because it was properly budgeted in the first place. I don't know that we fix it through policy, but it's a real problem.
I just want to speak to the volume of transfers, because, and from an accounting perspective, there are accounts that, you know, we have broken down into two object codes that are almost the same thing. And, you know, just on behalf of the administrators that are, that are planning or budgeting, they may not know whether it's, and I actually think we have two for mileage, like, what type of mileage is it? Is it mileage as a stipend, or mileage as a reimbursement? I mean, so, these transfers are going to happen, and we're planning our budget so far in advance. And I think that's the reason why I'm, I have a hard time changing the threshold, because there's so much administrative work that goes into pulling together all the transfers that we do to present to the board for approval. But then there are transfers that I do see are perfectly acceptable, just to align with our accounting.
Could I, I'm sorry, could I just, I just want to follow up with that. Lori, I don't need to, I expect transfers within cost centers within departments, right? That's just, that's what has to happen, right? That's not the part that's bothering me. When I see we're like blowing through a budget in one department, and then we're going like in, well, I don't want to pick on anybody, but in one area, we're blowing through a budget, so we got to go over to a completely different major area of the organization to go take that money. Now, that's going to happen too, all right? But it shouldn't happen as frequently as it happened this year. That's the only point, that's the only point I'm trying to make. And I'll say, okay, let's, let's say to you, well, she has to go clean up the general ledger. You know, you inherited the general ledger, there's accounts all over the place, like that example, why are there two my original accounts, somebody did that for some reason? But, you know, go clean it up. But it should lead us to a place where these things aren't happening. That's why I'm okay with leaving it at the 10,000, but it needs to get, the issue needs to be addressed.
Yes, and I do want to add that I don't know that, of course, I'm happy to own it for this upcoming year, but it's going to take some time to actually clean it all up. Because of course, then the other challenge is having the money to do the things that we need to be doing. I think you saw that example perfectly with special ed, where we tried to fund it, to right-size it, but we're not certain it's even at the right level. We've done the best we could with the limitations we were given.
Ms. Dayton.
On that point, I really disagree with you this time, Mr. Scher. And I think this board is kidding itself if they think that we can budget for special education, where the costs are out of our control. They are totally unknowable, when, well, many of the transfers you're speaking about are a result of overages that were spent for special education. Special education is the most volatile part of our budget, it has been for a decade. Every district in Connecticut is experiencing exactly the same budget pressures, exactly the same overages. This is a universal problem because of the law called burden of proof. We are going to continue to have settlements, we are going to continue to have out-of-district placements. There is nothing we can do, except ask the state to solve this problem. I do not think it's a result of Lori's procedures and practices. I think this board needs to get better educated on special education and start really advocating for change at the Capitol, because we cannot predict our level of spending with any accuracy. And if you can find a district that does this, please let me know.
So I'm going to bring this back to the example I want to use, it's in tonight's transfers. Item number two in tonight's transfers, it seems we overestimated the need for printer toner cartridges, and we budgeted money for a smart board that wasn't used. So that money is now being reallocated to purchase personalized learning furniture for the media center. So basically, money we found we weren't spending, we found a purpose for. And the transfer is right at $10,000. If it were $9,000 worth of furniture, we wouldn't hear about it. And that's, I guess, what I'm afraid of, is that we start doing more of this. But, you know, I'll go with the will of the board.
Ms. Neal.
I think if we don't see the budget transfers until we get the budget sort of straightened out a bit, if we don't see them, then we don't know there's a problem. So if we, so I think the more we see the transfers, because some budgets are really small anyway, I think the more it helps to inform the board's decision-making, and then maybe at such time, and we get the budget under control better, that we will be able to change the approval process.
So I'd actually like to make a motion to amend to take 3160 out of this pack for the, to have it for the discussion. Is there a second? Ms. Neal, second, any discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor? To pull this policy out for action tonight, for the discussion. So, okay, all those in favor? Two, all those opposed? One, two, three, four, all those abstaining? Two, so it's two, four, two, motion fails, all right? So the motion, the main motion on the table is to accept the policies, all those in favor? All, five, all those opposed, all those abstaining. So it passes 5-3. 5-0-3, yes, sorry. Okay, next up is the financial and staffing report. Do we have a motion to accept that? Is there a motion to accept the financial and staffing report? Ms. Dayton, is there a second? Ms. Stowe, discussion? Lori?
Yes, financial. So we're presenting to you for the month ending report for April 25th. I do just want to take an opportunity to mention, because we didn't get a chance to put it into the areas of concern, that we're forecasting to end the year at practically nothing, so, I didn't know how to put that. We're really closely monitoring it. So I do want to let you know that we have put into place, as a proactive measure, just to be sure that we do end the year with a balance of some sort, a soft freeze in place. We try to not hold it against the schools. So we were really controlling the funds at the, at the Hattler level, or at the district level, but I just wanted you to be aware that it is an area of concern for us right now, as we're nearing year end. The other risk, I guess mitigation here, is that the PO process is now closed, so there should be no more spending. So that gives us another opportunity to just keep an eye on things over the next couple of, a couple of weeks. We were recently made aware of a salary item that was supposed to be a retroactive pay that apparently, and we're not certain yet, we're still looking into this, didn't have an encumbrance for it, so it hit our budget when it was, it was an unanticipated item. So it's, the net of it would be about $300,000, 250 to 300,000, but we're still investigating it. But we just want you to be aware that these are some of the things that were, I'm sorry?
Ms. Scher, rewind that tape, please.
So we were hit with a retroactive pay. It was for the settled contracts. They were settled during the year. Typically, we encumbered dollars.
Yes, and they didn't encumber, so they-
There was an encumbrance, right now, yes, so-
They were short.
Right, well, that's what we're seeing right now, we're still investigating it. So it's possible that we still may get some additional credit, which is what we're looking for.
And you think the exposure is up to 300,000?
Well, we know that the net of it is, is 250 to 300,000.
Net, so-
The net, so that's the additional credit we would hope to get back, unless it just wasn't encumbered at all. So we're hoping there was some accounting, there's some accounting cleanup to do, but we're still looking into that with the town office.
I'm sorry, say that, I'm going to say that in a non-accounting English language. We may have a bill for $300,000 that we have not anticipated paying?
Right. And it's not that we didn't anticipate it, we were under the impression it was encumbered from prior years, because I guess the contracts have been open for some time.
How many years does that cover?
So I don't know exactly the specific contract.
Is it more than one?
It's definitely more than one.
Wow. Okay, well, unpleasant surprises you can do nothing about.
Mr. Scher.
Lori, is the BET fully informed that we're going to be at zero this year?
When they last inquired, my most current forecast at that time, I was thinking was about 300,000.
Not anymore! Funny how that works. But they, when did you last get them a forecast?
This was only on Tuesday night, was it Tuesday night?
Wow, unpleasant surprise, okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the financial and staffing report? Ms. Neal.
Do we anticipate returning any money to the state from our grant money? You know, in prior years, we returned money to the state. Are we anticipating that on?
I believe we are, I'd have to follow up and get that number for you, okay? Minimal? Yeah, I'm hearing minimal.
I think since we got this report, you guys have been a whole lot better about spending your money and the timeframe that the state allows for. I know sometimes we're waiting on the state to actually give you the dollars, or to tell you what you're going to get.
I know that the, one of the issues sometimes we have is with the private school money. I think that's true of title one as well, so we work, we work as hard as we can to clear out those accounts.
Ms. Stowe.
So I do this to make sure that Bob's awake. Can you tell me, since we're sitting here, not doing the Hamilton Avenue principal search?
Kathleen, did you ask about the principal search for Hamilton? Okay, the second round of interviews will be held tomorrow morning, and we're hoping to announce a principal for this school late next week.
If there's no further discussion-
Very excited about this.
He was excited more about an hour ago. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the financial and staffing reports? Passes 8-0, thank you. Next up is budget transfers. Is there somebody that would like to make a motion to accept the budget transfers? Ms. Stowe, is there a second? Ms. Neal, discussion? Yeah, I think I've made my point here, I will not be voting for this item. I have said this, this has got to be the third report in a row, where we seemingly find money and immediately find a use for that money. I'm getting extremely uncomfortable with voting on these after you've already spent the money. So I know you're putting controls in place for the rest of the year, I think there's controls for items like this should constantly be in place. We should really be having those discussions before the money is spent.
We've not, we've not already spent the money.
On this one? The last one? Because they already spent the money.
Go back and rewind the tape a little more.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to dispute that there are transactions that have happened. The process should be that there's a PO, so in order to encumber the dollars, you need to have a budget there. That, that is how it should work.
So if I-
I'm sorry. That's how it's supposed to work. It requires a lot of education and reminders, and making sure that people are following the process.
So let me understand that, then. We have a motion on the table to accept this, but if we didn't vote to accept this, you could not go ahead with the purchase?
Right, and just a reminder, we're really not allowing purchases anymore, so.
Hmm, interesting. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to amend to pull out the second item, which would be the purchase of personalized learning furniture for the media center. And we, it's for Western Middle School. I welcome my friends at Western Middle School, very uncomfortable. So is there a second for that motion to amend? Okay. Thank you. You know, this is becoming a recurring theme, and I understand that they're looking for furniture, and maybe that is something that should have come up in the capital processes, we talk about better planning, if there's a want or a need. Identifying it now for inclusion in next year's budget. But the fact that they didn't buy a smart board that they anticipated buying, the fact that they didn't need as much toner, doesn't then entitle us to go out and use that money for something different? If there were a need, an overage in something, the first item makes complete sense to me. We had to cover leave, removing money from one salary item to another, that makes perfect sense, that's unanticipated, it's necessary. I don't know that furniture is necessary, it's normal want and need, and they probably do need furniture, I get that, but because we're not spending on something, it doesn't mean we can go buy something we didn't ask for to begin with. Dr. Francis.
I was going to ask, was this part of a larger project that was already in plan? So was there a plan to purchase it, and this is, wow, we had a little extra that, that, you know, we thought we were going to be able to afford, but we couldn't, and that's what that rest of that money is? Or is this, is this basically what Mr. Francis described?
I don't recall the specifics of this particular item, because I know I had another transfer request for furniture that was actually broken, and they actually, they really needed to replace it, and that's something we typically do expect to see part of the operating budget, you know, that typical, that regular replacement cycle. I didn't get the sense that that would get this year, but I can't, I can't speak to this, this would be an area to speak to. this would be an answer, I'd speak to.
Mr. Sher.
We've got a lot of new people, and I think we need to be a little careful here. I don't think this is well-understood by everybody on the board. The BET by, actually gives us, when they budget, they give us flex in our budget, they don't make us do everything to the penny, because historically, we've given money back. But part of the reason they actually do that is so that we can manage, given flex in our budget, we can manage our own financial affairs. I realize there are some folks, I've heard it, they'll go nameless in the cabinet, and come here and they go, "Why don't you spend every last penny that you get?", which is a, not an uncommon idea in government, right? If you get the budget, spend it. The whole thing, I think we should be a little deliberate about, is if we wind up in that place where we're spending every last penny that we get, and it's a function, as we were talking about, hey, there's some money, so why don't we fund something we couldn't do? That may have a cascading effect in how the BET treats us. So we should just put that on our radar screen and start thinking about it, because now we're the place where, we used to return something, now we're returning almost nothing. And if that's gonna be our new modus operandi, I, somebody, maybe from the Budget Committee or whoever, has gotta talk to the BET and say, "How are they going to change the way they handle us if we wind up doing that?" So it's something to think about, not a problem to be solved tonight, but this is a poster child of where this problem leads.
Just the add-on to that here is, what if we do experience an emergency in another line and we need funds, we basically depleted them because over time we've decided, and we were shifting stuff, so I worry about that. Ms. Raven.
I agree with you in principle, but I don't know that we know the reason for this particular one to make it like the poster child, but I agree with the principles that everyone's saying.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? So the motion on the table was to remove item number two from the transfers. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? So it's 1-7, 1-6-1, the motion fails. So all those in favor of accepting the transfers? Six, all those opposed? Passes 6-2. All right, that leads us to our agenda plan. So I think we got the note about the teacher data for the fall, so on the evaluations. Program review will have something in June at our business meeting. The other thing I wanted to raise with everybody is the possibility of having a retreat with Dr. Jones once she starts. So what I will be doing is sending an email to the board, asking for availability. We will look at nights, if nights don't work, we will look at weekends, I know people start to fade away for the summer, so this may be difficult to plan, but please do watch out for the note for that. Mr. Sher.
Is there, I raised this with some folks in policy governance. At one point, we had a, which is really helpful, a full description from Irene Perici about, essentially, our assessment system, how that works, tiered, it's a tiered system, what instruments are used with what, it goes kind of also to, it seems to me in that conversation is also, we were supposed to be spending, by now, we're supposed to be doing full-blown student profiles that went home, audit acros. I mean, I, I'm amazed, it's too, it's too late to talk about how annoying that actually...
Are you asking to put that on the agenda for this year?
Well, my question is, if people agree, do we need to have an item on the agenda on this topic, so that everybody gets level set, but also we can raise all the concerns and issues that are kind of under this topic? And the question, I'm just asking, would it make sense to have it as an item? Someone has to figure out the timing of it.
Do you want to style that under what, student profile, or how do you...
No, I think it was originally, I think it was originally assessment, wasn't it? I think that's when she brought in that big, I think it was when we were looking at performance at schools, and then she spent a lot of time educating people on what assessment actually was and how the assessment set worked, and I would like a review of that. Given she's not, anybody else interested in that?
Mrs. O'Neil.
It's a policy, through the policy pass this year, that the assessment system has to be brought to the board. I don't know if that's the next step, I just want them to clear that with the policy.
Right, so Dr. Francis is gonna be presenting at the next meeting, working with superintendent as the annual report schedule. Right, so we're gonna see, we're gonna see the draft report schedule for next year at our next meeting and vote on it at our business meeting. Ms. Dayton.
The first meeting after, let's say, the graduation date, the very first coordinating after that. I would love to have a report on the UConn Special Education Best Practices study.
Dr. Francis, you have that for... I think, Mary, you said the work is happening over the summer, so I guess we would expect something in September, okay? Or August, technically, because I think we may be getting August, maybe we're not. All right, anything else for agenda planning? Dr. Francis.
So one, I feel like, maybe because it's got split, I didn't get my question in the right time, but we talked about sort of the food thing in two places and including the trays in two places. When are we sort of making a decision about, is this something we're gonna do as an interim? And that actually brings me to the next thing I have, which is sort of a broader question that I think we need to talk about at some point, which is, how are we looking at our master facility plan in the upcoming years? You could sort of say that we've recently looked at it, so high school, the elementary school, I mean, that stuff is kind of fresh, but moving forward year to year, I kind of feel like we need to be looking at those big plans and talking about, okay, what do we think about this project now? You know, where are we now with this, before it goes to the drawing phases and those things? And do we want to do that with any other people in town, any other organizational bodies, whatever? And so when do we sort of talk about how we want to approach that?
I mean, I'm looking at Lori, because I think some of it is really baked into the budget development process. I think you want, you'd need feedback from us, the questions, how do you do that?
Yeah, I, right, I mean, the master plan's a large document, we're gonna take each year the way it was planned out for us, so each year, as we review it as part of our capital planning process, we'll look at all the items slated, and then Budget Committee gets involved in that, and we, you know, review it with the Budget Committee, so that process will continually...
That is exactly the role of the Budget Committee, is to look at the capital plan for each year and bring it back to the board.
So maybe we'll get this when we get the Board Superior Report and when we understand that a little bit better, but I guess my question is, you know, we sort of agreed to this prioritization, and now we have sort of this plan that whatever, 10 years from now, we're gonna be looking at Central. So is the, the sort of first pass sort of sketch that they gave us for Central, that we now have automatically at that point, 10 years from now, going to be the plan that the architects go with, or are we gonna have a discussion as a board about that again in terms of what are we looking for?
So basically, just to lay this out, because we've been through this, the, if we do these building projects, basically, there'd have to be Building Committee, and I guess, there'd be several ones for each one. The Building Committee interviews architects, the architects are presented to the board, the board is thumbs up, thumbs down on our architect, and if you reject it, they gotta go back to the drawing board. Then the architect goes and does design, that comes and gets presented to the board. So there's basically multiple touchpoints as that process works.
So I, so this is where current light turns comes in, but I thought I had asked someone, and they said, "No, there's only Building Committees for projects where you're expecting to get funding back from the state, and so there might be some projects where we wouldn't have a Building Committee." So then when, when, so when's the input?
That works for the stadium, I think you're gonna end up, because there may or may not be state funding, we don't know what the state's gonna do with their building program, so at this point, I couldn't tell you, because of the way that it would work is, there's still some state money you can apply for, I think you'd go through that process anyway. The other is, these projects are so big, I can't envision that one person, a facilities director, could manage a, that, those big projects, one after the other like that. I mean, that's just based on the experience I've had on the Building Committee, and we've had a couple of people who served on MISA, and Lauren can kind of speak to her experience on that, but I don't know that you could do it any other way. It's another full-time job. Ms. Sher.
Game time, to your point, you know, I went back and looked at when we had this conversation in last June, you asked some really good questions that in my mind are still hanging out there. I'll give you one as an example. Russ Davidson came in, in that meeting, and he presented a schedule that was based on the assumption of financially, it was smooth and flat every year. You asked the question of, "Wait a second, are we now fitting our actual academic needs to a flat financial plan?" You talked about it being, you know, you asked him a question about, "Should it be lumpy? Could you give us a plan that was based on our actual enrollment needs, our needs, and so on and so forth?" Some of these, for me, maybe I'm the only one, it was an incomplete conversation. So my question would be, as we go to the Budget folks and say, "Okay, do we do that in the Budget Committee? Does that need to be done at the full board?" I'm cool with it being in the Budget Committee, it doesn't matter to me, but it seemed to me there were a couple of questions that were hanging out there. The other thing is, Lori, along the way in the plan, we've got some massive documents that got brought in the meetings, right? I know, I know there's a lot of stuff online, but did every single document that was ever brought into a public meeting by Russ Davidson, was that all put online? Because I think some of the stuff there, someone said, "Well, this is what Jill was around." She said, "No, I don't put it online, but it's one of those things, if someone wants to come into the building and see it, they can see it." Do you know if everything went online?
I mean, certainly, didn't make it ever mess with it online, as far as I know.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, just that big timeline, yeah, we didn't put that out.
We, I, I, a prior superintendent thought it was okay to not have documents like that, anything that is presented in a public meeting. I don't care if somebody brings in a presentation on their laptop, it has to go online, because otherwise, we're not following our, we're not reading FOIA responsibilities. There can't be anything, even if it's like inconvenient, that isn't online, so...
Okay. All right, anything else for agenda plan? What's going on? Dr. Francis, you wanna make a motion? No, you're adjourned, I'll second that. All those in favor? You're adjourned, thank you very much.